Good afternoon. I'd like to call the May 12, 2015 City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco, Hart, Hotchkiss, Mario, Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider. Proclamation declaring May 16, 2015 is the 50th anniversary of the Arts and Crafts Show.
auspicious day. Come on up. The Santa Barbara Arts and Crafts Show was established in 1965 by Robert Is it Aishen? Do we know? Aishen. I'm going to, it's Aishen. Okay. A retired Santa Barbara architect and painter. And Mr. Aishen was inspired by the sidewalk art shows of Europe and the prestigious Jardine de Arte in Mexico City. And the show originally called the Domingo Art Show began with a small group of artists in Dela Guerra Plaza. And the show soon outgrew the plaza. And in 1966, with the sponsorship of the city's Park and Recreation Department, the show's name was changed to the Sabado and Domingo Art Show, and the event moved to Cabrillo Boulevard. In 1971, the show invited local craftspeople to join, and in 1972, the name was changed to the Santa Barbara Arts and Crafts Show. And the Santa Barbara Arts and Crafts Show is the only continuous, non-geried art festival of original drawings, paintings, sculptures, crafts, and photography in the world. Really? Wow. Look at that. Okay. It must be true. It's written down. And whereas every Sunday and some Saturdays, Cabrillo Boulevard transforms into a celebration of arts and crafts created by approximately 200 Santa Barbara County artisans. And millions of visitors from around the world have delighted in the original creations of local artists, making the Santa Barbara Arts and Crafts Show one of the major tourist attractions in Santa Barbara. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby recognize May 16, 2015, as the 50th anniversary of the Santa Barbara Arts and Crafts Show. And thank you for your work in making all this happen. And to all the artisans out there, there are quite a few, so thank you. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Schneider. It is a big event for the Santa Barbara Arts and Crafts Show, and I'd like to introduce the Chair of the Santa Barbara Arts and Crafts Show Advisory Committee, Marilyn Dana Howard, just to say a few words.
Thank you, Helene Mayor and City Council. This proclamation is great. We're really proud of it. 50th anniversary is a big deal to us, and we're going to have a great celebration out there this Saturday and Sunday, particularly Sunday, with some music and food trucks and lots of art and craft and people demonstrating their crafts. And we hope that all of you can make it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Exciting. Okay. Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Nope? Okay. Public comment. I have a few speaker slips here. We have two minutes at the podium. We'll start with Clint Orr, to be followed by Phil Walker.
Hello again, Mayor Schneider and council members. Of course, I'm Clint Orr. And I'm here, I'm in the process of kicking off a fundraiser on Indiegogo on behalf of the California Country Dance Foundation. And it's called the, that's a good question, How to Dance Honky Tonk. Okay? So, as you know, I've been looking to build or to establish country dance. Couples dance to country music here in this county for quite some time. I've spoken here about it maybe 20 or more times. And what I'm looking at is Earl Warren Showgrounds in July, and it's a 22,000-foot exhibition hall. Turn off your phone, Frank. Anyway, so what we'll do is, I'm crowdfunding it. It's going to happen in July. We'll have two live bands, four DJs, and six dance teachers. It'll be like three bucks for teens and five bucks for adults, free parking, run by a nonprofit. And then, down the road, my plan, of course, is to build the Airport Honky Tonk on the property that is owned by the Airport Authority. And that would be at the northeast corner of Lopez and Hollister. It's zoned, commercial, recreational, so the zoning's already set. So, once we have our financing in place, we hope to be able to have the Airport Authority build a 30,000-foot tilt-up, basically just tilt-up with bathrooms, and that would be the Airport Honky Tonk. And there's plenty of parking, and it's a good location, and that would be the location in the future for Santa Barbara to have couples dance to country music. So, anyway, pleasure talking to y'all. Thank you.
Phil Walker will be followed by Steve Price.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. You know, sometimes it takes a long time, a long journey to figure out things, but we had an eight-year city tree trimmer that transferred over to El Estero, Dave Evans, real sharp young man. And he was got talking to me one day, and in 1972, the summer of '72, end of the fall, I worked for Griffin Tree and Landscape, and we were charged with landscaping and doing all the pruning and tree cutting out at the Glen Annie Substation for Southern California Edison. And we were up, my partner and I, were up on a bank, a cut, probably 85, 90 feet, 60% gradient, very steep. We had to pull up with Maddox and just digging holes in the rocky soil that was left after the dozers got done with it, putting in ground cover freeway daisy. And I was very concerned because there was baby rattlers, rattler, rattle, excuse me, rattlet state nests everywhere. And just they were, you know, they're dangerous, too. They can bite you and be very poisonous and have a, sometimes fatal effect. But way over to the west, probably 1,400, a quarter mile, between a quarter mile and a third of a mile on the western perimeter of the Edison Substation there, there was a giant stand of eucalyptus blue gums, 140, 160 feet tall. You know, and I knew the guys were up there cutting the limbs, pruning them up, and I was amazed. I always thought it was Danny, who was a big man, probably 6, 6'1", 220 pounds, how he could dance around so well way up on these limbs, which I never do. And it turns out, it was a former city parks tree worker, Jess Catan, that retired about four years ago. Okay. He made a cut, 140 feet up, made a cut, and it, under tension, the limb kicked out on him, and he was roped in, you know, with his climbing boots and everything. He did a complete somersault, 60 feet in the air, 60 feet down, and was able to catch with one of his climbing boots, the spikes caught in a limb crotch. That gentleman, the saw was still running when they got him down, and he came back to work that next day, which possibly could have become, you know, a very close fatal experience. And he said he had bills to pay. So, that's the caliber of some of the city workers you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Price will be followed by Tom Widrow.
Of course, we have Officer Van Eyck behind us, another testament to the great employees of your city. I spent 15 years in Texas and graduated University of Texas, classes 79. And there's a saying in Texas, "Once a toothpaste is out of the tube, it's dang hard to get it back in." So, I guess the honky-tonk is in the works for the city. And in an arts-related matter, this being the 50th anniversary of your Arts and Crafts Fair, which I think you should also consider having the farmer's market people, you know, it's just so hard for them to come in, set up, go down. It'd be nice to have them possibly at the beach as a concept. Someone once said to Albert Einstein, "How does it feel to be the smartest person in the world?" He said, "Well, you should ask Tesla." And Tesla, between Tesla and Disney, who offered the city of Los Angeles a free monorail system, visionaries in history in America have been shot down. And I've been a journalist for 30 years, ABC and CBS News, and I find it disgraceful that the newspaper down the street did nothing to cover a new visionary in our city, Riley Barris, who produced this Broadway-quality play, Crazy for You, a Gershwin play, from 1939. And the news press didn't even do a story, and I'm thinking maybe the city and Oprah should consider a Riley Barris Center for the Performing Arts at the National Guard Armory that's just sitting there empty. Thank you, Steve Price, CBS News.
Tom Widrow will be followed by Robert Johns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I just noticed the other day, an article published in local, in the Santa Barbara Independent, there's apparently going to be a discussion, community dialogue about the minimum wage. And City Watch wanted to weigh in. I represent City Watch, a group of concerned citizens who participate here in local governance on a weekly basis, as you well know. Peter Rupert, who completed the UCSB Santa Barbara Economic Forecast, and if you were there, I think he briefly addressed what minimum wages do to local business, particularly when the minimum wage is above what the market will bear. If a minimum wage is set below what the market will bear, it's okay, because the market is already commanding a certain wage. But if it goes above that, what it does, the result is it slows the economy and it ultimately deprives people who need jobs the most, people who tend to be on the entry level of those jobs. So, when you're pushing for a $15-an-hour wage, you see what's happening in Seattle. Some restaurants are being put out of business. Some small businesses are suffering because they simply cannot afford that. Others are removing other benefits that they provide because they cannot afford that. So, as this discussion takes place, as I think it's generally a union-backed initiative to push that, I'd like all of us to look back on some of our jobs that we held earlier in our careers. In my 20s, I worked for what was soon to be Assembly Member Brooks Firestone as a campaign assistant. It was a foolish endeavor on my part, as it took probably about 80 hours a week for the better course of a year. So, if you figured out what I earned as a minimum wage, it wouldn't be anything close to what they're asking. So, as we have this discussion, I hope that you'll consider this perspective. Thank you.
Robert Johns will be followed by Ethan Shankman. Mr. Johns? Yep, I did. He has a handout here.
Good afternoon, council persons. I trust you all got a copy of my latest County Board of Supervisors propaganda. From time to time, I will be giving you some update on that. I know all of you don't know exactly what's been going on on the board. Mayor Schneider, I think you have a better than, better than chance, good chance of being, a good chance of running for the 24th district. I think you have a really good chance. The women and the environmentalists, I think it's going to be a good run for you. And Dale Francisco, I liked the way you spoke out and said this was not a, it's not a democratic process. And I'm looking forward for you being on the first district, because they need somebody on the first district supervisor. Need somebody to stand up for the people. I think you can do that. I, I'm a little bit lost for words here because I have so much to say. So, anyway, I'm going to just, I'm going to leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Ethan Shankman will be followed by Michael Baker, and then the final speaker will be
Hi. This is Mayor, City Council. How are you doing today? Today, we got this morning, the city notifies the public via press release, this morning, surrounding a program called Magic on the Urban Wine Trail for Kids, where raising money at risk youth, raising money for at-risk youth as minor teens participating with activities raised only $39,000, organized by Hub International through the Parks and Recreation Division of the city. Speaking of controlled substances, when is the next beer garden so that kids can participate with that, too?
Thank you.
Captain, Mayor and Council, my name is Michael Baker, CEO for United Boys and Girls Club. Just want to thank you for your continued support and let you know there's really good things happening at the West Side Club. I encourage each and every one of you to come down and see what's happening there. Many of you have taken a tour. Those of you that haven't, you need to come down and see what's going on there because some really special things are happening. Saturday's numbers are growing dramatically. We're really happy about that. But we're most proud of, as the outreach effort that we're doing to reach the kids who couldn't get to the Boys and Girls Club before. Again, as I told you before, we have vans that have been used to transport youth from schools to the Boys and Girls Club on a daily basis, and then those vans would sit for about 23 hours a day until they were used the next day. So, what I charge our staff with, not only at our West Side Club here in Santa Barbara, but our clubs in Carpenteria, Galita, and our club in Lompoc, is to look outside the boundaries of the building and reach the kids that need the Boys and Girls Club the most and bring them into the building so that we can make a difference in those kids' lives. So, that's happening every single day. I want to encourage you to come down and see that firsthand. Many of you have seen it already, and there's nothing more powerful than that. In addition to that, again, I want to give a special plug to Dave Cash, Superintendent of Schools here in the city for Santa Barbara School District. He and his department through Nancy Weiss have been able to bring the Mobile Cafe down to the Boys and Girls Club, and as a result, we are now feeding over, over 200 people a night at the Boys and Girls Club, a healthy dinner. Again, it was just a simple meeting. When I was going around meeting people when I first got here, he was one of the first people I met, and he promised me he'd get me lunches on Saturdays, and look what it's developed into. So, again, I want to encourage you to come down. I'll even pay for your meal if you come down and have a meal at the Boys and Girls Club. So, I want to thank you all for your support.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mario.
Mr. Baker, can I mention the pancake breakfast at the West Side Boys and Girls Club on Saturday?
Absolutely.
You were kind of talking about food. I was waiting for you to get to the pancakes. So, it's Saturday, starting at 8:00, and it's the Kiwanis Groups as well.
Yes. Kiwanis is putting it on. It's an annual event, and we encourage the community to come out and support. It's $5 a ticket.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They know how to do pancakes. We've seen it every year at Fiesta time, so they're the ones in charge that Saturday morning. Same folks. Jeff Bard.
Madam Mayor, members of council. When I hear about the free pancakes, I knew I should have run for City Council when I could have, but it's one of those lost opportunities. And one of my lost opportunities was when I made what was arguably not a great decision to leave law school. And I was at the top of a class of 200 in constitutional law. Actually, I was tied for first place among 200 students. That put me in the first percentile of City University School of Law in constitutional law. And a few years thereafter, I found myself as a pro se litigant in Gore versus Harris in Florida. I was in Tallahassee in the courtroom with great attorneys like David Boies, and shoulder to shoulder with people who were representing Al Gore. And then I came to Santa Barbara and have seen many constitutional issues, federal constitutional issues, really in much of the city ordinances that are passed. And I just want to urge you to always keep an eye on the U.S. Constitution and realize that ordinances that you pass because you feel provoked by panhandlers or aggravated or annoyed by, you know, I don't know, somebody's branch going over somebody's property line, every time you pass an ordinance, I certainly hope that you parse, you know, constitutional issues that become involved and also statutory federal issues. And there isn't time today, but I get a lot of questions about service dog law, and it's actually state and federal law as well. So, I hope to come back sometime and just kind of give you some reminders and some heads up about that. And thank you very much.
Okay. That concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar, and you have some items to read.
Item three, adoption of ordinance amending Municipal Code, Chapter 1, 4.32, to prohibit private water well construction on properties served by the city's water system, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending Section 1, 4, 3, 2, 0, 4, 0 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code to prohibit private well construction on properties served by the city's water supply system and to repeal Section 1, 4, 3, 2, 1, 1, 5 pertaining to emergencies. Item four, introduction of ordinances for proposal to change the system for assignment of mooring permits in the East Beach mooring area from a lottery system to a first-come, first-served system, recommending that council, A, introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending Section 1, 7, 2, 0, 2, 5, 5, C of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code to change the system for assignment of mooring permits in the East Beach mooring area from a lottery system to a first-come, first-served system, and B, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara establishing rules and regulations for issuing mooring permits in the city of Santa Barbara mooring area, setting minimum specifications for installing, inspecting, and repairing such moorings, and repealing Resolution Number 1, 2, 0, 1, 4. Item five, resolution for reservation of community benefit project square footage for direct relief, 6,100 Hollister Avenue, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara reserving 30,000 square feet from the community develop, community benefit category for the direct relief project, 6,100 Hollister Avenue. Item six, parking and business improvement area annual assessment report for fiscal year 2016 intention to levy, including recommendation B, that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara declaring council's intention to levy parking and business improvement area assessment rates for the 2016 fiscal year at a public hearing to be held on June 9, 2015, at 2:00 PM. And item 11, resolution adopting stage-three drought regulations and development restrictions, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara establishing water use regulations and development restrictions to be effective during a stage-three drought emergency.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Mr. Widrow has public comment speaker slips on 3, 7, 8, and 11. And Mr. Rouse, did you have something also?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I needed to step down on item six, as I am a member of the PBIA Assessment Area.
Okay. So, why don't we first do a motion for item six?
So, moved, Madam Mayor?
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stashed.
And one exception, so six, 0, 1. Okay. So, that's number six. Okay. Item three is the adoption of ordinance about the private well, water well construction. Mr. Widrow, why don't you come on up? And you might as well stay up there.
I suppose, okay. No one else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On our agenda, item number three, the prohibition of water well construction. I was listening to what Councilmember White said last time, that it's better safe than sorry. And then I also heard what the Councilmember Francisco said, which I think City Watch tends to agree with, which is the notion that before passing any ordinance, it's good to hear from staff exactly, you know, some of the history behind what has happened in other droughts. Has there ever been a rush, for instance, for people to ask, for private property owners to ask for private wells, you know, those who are on the city's system? And, you know, you may look at it as, well, there's no harm in passing that. I think from City Watch's perspective, we're saying is that if you don't need to pass an ordinance, if you don't have a whole lot of substance behind that, maybe we don't need to add another piece of regulation to the books. And then also, when we start looking, and I commend the council, and I will again later, for your decision with regard to stage-three drought measures in this relation to not punish, for instance, pool builders, that was an example of not adding an extraneous regulation to what the governor is requiring of us as a city. So, bottom line is, I think we are victims of poor planning overall on a state level rather than looking at private property owners. You have to look at the state government and the federal government and some of the decisions we've made in terms of the way we store our water and deliver our water in the state of California. It's not very good, and we're suffering unnecessarily from what should, it is a severe drought, but the effects are far more severe than they need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments on item three? Okay. So, for now, we'll just stay right there. Mr. Widrow, we're going to do item seven, which is the, can you read item seven? I think you read that one.
$275,000 loan to the Turner Foundation for Rehabilitation of 1, 5, 0, 2 to 1, 5, 2, 2, San Pascual Lighthouse Apartments.
Okay. Mr. Widrow.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, council members. It's not that City Watch stands in opposition to the loan. We don't. But the truth of it is, we need to face the fact that we live in a city where there's no way to truly mitigate for quote-unquote socioeconomic inequality. And sometimes we seek to spend a significant amount of money, and $275,000 is no small sum, to rehab seven low-income units. And it feels like a feel-good measure to me as opposed to addressing the real issue square in the face, which is that we live in a uniquely desirable place to live. Unfortunately, during my 20s, I failed to get the council of, Councilmember Hotchkiss, and buy a piece of property here in Santa Barbara when it was actually semi-affordable. As such, I've been priced out of the market. So, even, so I can't, someone like me, someone with a job, with a family, I can't qualify for a low-income unit, per se. I have to work hard and make do with the reality, but I'm willing to pay that price to live here on the central coast. So, the bottom line is that the city should focus on, in our opinion, City Watch's opinion, on its prime directive, which is to provide funding for basic services. Those include roads, public safety, maintenance. And let us just accept the fact that none of these kind of small measures are really going to change anything, and that often, these programs can be abused as well. So, thank you.
Any comments on item seven? I know the Turner Foundation representatives are here. Just personally, I, they do good work. Like, I'm sure they could use the loan money, and I think, I think this fund, these funds in the Finance Committee look at it as specifically for this purpose.
I guess, Madam Mayor, what I would say, because the Finance Committee did evaluate this, as we evaluate all of these, and what I would point out is, and I, you know, I can't disagree with the general concept that the government is not going to be able to solve housing market problems. I agree with that. On the other hand, the money we're talking about here is specifically dedicated to this purpose. Whether it's truly effective or not in the long run, I can't say, but I just want to point out, we're not spending general fund money on this. We're spending money that has been dedicated to this purpose and no other.
Okay. All right. And so, item eight, it's the Home Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Grant, and I have a feeling it's similar comments, but go right ahead, Mr. Widrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Thank you, Councilmember Francisco, for that clarification. I think I did, do acknowledge that, which is why we don't oppose the spending of the $275,000. I just encourage us as a community, even on item number eight here, as we're looking to approve rental assistance grant, rental assistance grants in the amount of $385,000. I think, as I quoted before, the city of Santa Barbara is the most expensive city, according to the news press, in a recent study, in the most expensive county in the state of California. Only 14% of residents, you know, can afford an average-priced home. And so, the question is, are we encouraging, and this is a tough question, are we encouraging those who are at risk, those who are suffering, you know, to try to afford to live here when it's really a daunting task? If you have good mental health, sobriety, stability, a job, can you really afford to even make a go of it here? I mean, it's a fair question. Not too long ago, I believe, the news press followed around a doctor who was recruited by Cottage Hospital, and he had a very difficult time finding a home because of home prices. So, it gets to the same notion. And once again, the market sets affordability, the market. If supply outstrips demand, well, then prices go down until then, unless otherwise, we're just only taking a very much of a Band-Aid approach to this. Thank you.
Okay. And then item 11, which is the stage-three drought regulations. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Regarding those, appreciate the clarity of purpose of this council last week. I know staff recommended the restriction of building pools, and it was revealed that we only have the pool builders, the pools, and it was revealed that we only have -- the Pool Builders Association only has 14 applications to the city per year. Doesn't seem like very much. And I really thought that this council did a great job in asking pertinent questions. One of the questions being really, how much water does it cost to build these pools? Or when these pools, once they're constructed, are sitting there, how much water is that really taking up? I think some people came up and urged you, you know, to take some more severe restrictions than the stage three drought regulations called for, but this council wisely actually asked staff to really, if you're going to do that, are you going to propose something else to save water, to go back and figure out how much water does it really save?
Thank you. Okay, so any --
Oh, is that it?
Was that -- oh, did you have something else?
Oh, no. Is that -- is that -- am I done with consent items?
That's all of them. You went through all of them.
Well, thanks for having me.
Thank you very much.
Much obliged.
All right. Is there a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
Move the rest of the consent calendar, Madam Mayor.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today and heard reports on projected increases to enterprise fund fees. We heard from various outside organizations who were requesting increases in their aid from the city. And we also heard a report, a historical report, on reserves and how we might get back to policy level on our reserves.
Great.
In the general fund.
Sounds like a good discussion. Item 13.
Recreational vehicle parking and temporary recreational vehicle ordinances, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only the following ordinances recommended by the ordinance committee. A, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara to amend section 1044205 of the Santa Barbara municipal code pertaining to the parking of recreational vehicles and the definition of excessive numbers of such vehicles, and B, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara to amend sections 1516060 and 1516080 of the Santa Barbara municipal code to delete temporary recreational vehicles from the prohibition on sleeping, human habitation, or camping in recreational vehicles in certain areas.
Mr. Klon?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the questions before the council today have to do with the city's policies regarding recreational vehicle parking. The story begins in 2002 when the city took action to forbid all recreational vehicle parking overnight on city streets. That ordinance was litigated up through the Court of Appeal. The Court of Appeal upheld the city's power to restrict recreational vehicle parking, but struck down the city's practice of only posting the entrances to the city with no parking signs. In essence, the Court of Appeal said that if you want to forbid RV parking, you need to post each location where they might park, at least each block face. Fast forward to 2008. After settlement of the litigation from 2002 involving a group called Homes on Wheels, the city staff with the city attorney's office came forward with a proposal to forbid the parking of excessive numbers of RVs in certain areas that were deemed sensitive. We're talking about around schools, hospitals, childcare centers, areas where the nuisance factors that had been observed with overnight RV parking had reached sort of a crisis pitch. At that time, the city council was concerned that it didn't want to give blanket authority to the Public Works Director and Police Chief to forbid RV parking anywhere. What it did was say instead that only when an excessive number of RVs were parked near those sensitive locations I mentioned, could the Public Works Director post signs forbidding recreational vehicles. Unfortunately, perhaps at that time, the city council did not define what it meant by the term excessive numbers of RVs. As time has passed since 2008, when that ordinance was enacted, staff has generally applied the term excessive to mean more than one RV. On occasion, however, the staff has said that one RV is excessive because of safety concerns associated with the street. Last year, Homes on Wheels again approached the mayor and my office with concerns about administration of that ordinance. Through the course of the summer, I met on many, many occasions with representatives of Homes on Wheels and agreed to present to the ordinance committee last fall a definition of the term excessive. The definition that I agreed to present was that an excessive number of RVs would be three or more parked in any one area. The ordinance committee heard that, heard the arguments from Homes on Wheels, and decided to recommend to the council that two or more RVs parked in a location would be an excessive number, and the Public Works Director on advice of the Police Chief would have authority to post signs. So the narrow question before the council in ordinance one today is whether to forbid excessive parking of RVs where excessive is defined as the number two. The other thing the ordinance committee did with that question was to recommend to the council that citywide recreational vehicles be forbidden from parking near schools and educational institutions. That is -- amounts to a direction to staff to post those areas citywide. I don't know how many are not posted currently, but I suspect that many of the school areas are already posted. This would, again, constitute a direction to staff to go ahead and post citywide. The second set of code amendments that are before the council today have to do with the definition of temporary recreational vehicles. I mentioned in the report that last year, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that a Los Angeles ordinance defining or prohibiting living in vehicles was unconstitutional. The city of Santa Barbara's ordinance forbids not only RVs from being parked on the streets and used for living quarters, which I believe is constitutional, it also prohibits the use of temporary recreational vehicles. And the definition of temporary recreational vehicle in our code is very broad and could arguably include something as simple as a sedan with a sleeping bag in the backseat. I believe that part of the ordinance is also unconstitutional. So along with the definition of excessive, we're proposing that the council and the ordinance committee recommended that council eliminate the phrase temporary recreational vehicle from our prohibition on living on the streets, basically. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? We do have two public comment speaker slips. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Quick question. I thought we said excessive was more than one on a block face.
Two or more. You're correct.
Same thing.
All right, two or more.
Ms. Murillo?
Mr. Klon, why did you recommend three as an excessive number? I supported that, by the way, being the member of the ordinance committee that wanted it to be excessive as the number three, not number two.
It was purely a judgment call and an effort to reach consensus or agreement, I should say, with Homes on Wheels. There isn't any magic in two versus three.
Mr. Hotchkiss, do you have another question? No. Okay. Okay, we have a couple of public comments speaker slips. Tom Woodrow and then Elizabeth Prescott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council.
Council members, I appreciate that. There's my mic. Hello. First of all, I want to commend the council for looking at this again. This is a really important issue to residents, and they've spoken up to our group, City Watch. And it crosses the political spectrum, liberal, conservative, Republican, Democrat, independent. People are uncomfortable generally with RVs parking on the residential streets. For me, where I live with my four kids, one RV parked on our street would be a problem. I'd be concerned. Who's living there? What's going on? Also, there, you know, I know that the Police Chief reports some criminal activity sometimes associated with RV, some increase. So that's just a really, across the board, it's a strong concern of people. I think you're taking great measures in the right direction, and I would encourage you to go with the two or more is excessive because it is. And also, definitely, the 500 feet between schools and other sensitive areas makes a great deal of sense. So, the rest of us who, we pay rent or we pay property taxes, and we live in this community, and we have obligations and responsibilities, there are other more appropriate places for recreational vehicles. There are recreational vehicle parks. There's one in Ventura, whom I happen to know, charges about $800 a month to be there. So it seems like city streets are a really inappropriate place for that kind of thing happening, and to really applaud the council's efforts at trying to get a handle on this, City Watch is appreciative. Thank you.
Elizabeth Prescott, and then Robert Burke.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I do dwell in RV, and you've gotten us down now by the industrial area. And what I've been observing is, we're really not bothering the workers. I understand, I wouldn't want RVs either in residential areas, you know. I wouldn't myself if I had my home in that. But I think we should be judged by our actions, you know, just like if your neighborhood, you know, you got one bad apple in your neighborhood, well, we should start being judged for our actions, not being lump sum. We get harassed ourselves. There's a lady at Mobile Loco, my husband was lighting our hot water tank, and he had a torch. She instantly ran over, started taking pictures, saying that we was doing drugs and that. And all he was doing was lighting his hot water tank in our home. You know, torch works as a hot tank and furnace and that, you know, that's why we have it. But I just want you to -- I understand people's thing about residential, but now we're all down there at the industrial, and there is quite a few. I wish that they'd think of going other places instead of jamming us all up in one spot. But I don't see any of the people in the motorhomes going into the businesses, causing them trouble, and that a lot of them work, go to work, so they're just parked there, you know, so they can go to work and come back because that's the only spots that's left ready to park. That's all I have to say, and thank you for listening. Have a good day.
Thank you. Robert Burke?
Madam Mayor, council members, this is spontaneous. I did not plan to speak today. I was homeless off and on for 18 years, and most of -- a lot of that time I spent in a vehicle. I had a Volkswagen camper, and that was too big, so I got a little Japanese station wagon, and that was just fine. And my daily ablutions were at the gym. I think the contest of opinions, first of all, there's the prejudicial aspect against homeless people, homeless crimes. I mean, that's like juvenile delinquent. And that's a prejudice I would like to -- phrase I would like to see go away. The other is, when you go into a neighborhood and buy a house, you have certain expectations of clean streets. But the streets belong to the people, and I'm people. So if you're going to zone them out of any place to go, where are they going to go? I recommend that maybe a way to handle this would be time limits. I always -- I had my certain spots that I went to, maybe a total of half a dozen or so, and I would vary between them so I would not disturb anyone in the neighborhood. And I also was able to stop a crime because I was there. I had a sign on my back window that cited legal precedent. There was a case in Los -- came out of Los Angeles that said if you -- a car is an emergency vehicle, an emergency housing is allowed. And six half a dozen times, the cops knocked on my door at 2:00 in the morning. I said, "Read this sign." They read this sign. "Thank you, sir," and they left. I think that, on the one hand, you have the people who move to a neighborhood, this is what they expect of that neighborhood. And then the other hand, you have, the streets belong to the people. 500 years ago, people lived in teepees. They would be against the law right now. So, it's a quandary, and the only suggestion I can make that might aid this along is time limits. I always left early and showed up late, and so the neighborhood did not get disturbed. I guess my time's up. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the council. Ms. Murillo?
Thank you. So, Mr. Klon, isn't it we're talking about in a certain space of how many RVs can be in a certain location?
Yes, presumably. The ordinance doesn't specifically say excessive on one block face, but that's how it's been interpreted, if I understand correctly. And Mr. Allen's here, if you have any questions related to how it's been applied.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Yes, that's correct. I'm Browning Allen, Transportation Manager. We have been looking at it within the block face, 500 feet from a specific location. So we wouldn't go take a 500-foot radius and see if there's more than one RV in that radius. We typically look within the block face or within 500 feet on that particular street to see how many RVs are parked.
So, within a space of 500 feet, it -- what we're proposing today is if there's two RVs in -- within that, a block face of 500 feet?
Yeah, block -- a city block is approximately 500 feet. So that's why we use that number. So yes, if we find an RV within a block face for 500 feet, so the location is mid-block that we're looking at will go 500 feet, to see if there's more than one RV or now two or more RVs parked within that 500 feet of that location, to see if it qualifies under the ordinance.
And did I hear from you, Mr. Allen, that the schools are already -- there's signage around the schools appropriately now? That I thought that was staff's position.
Most of our schools are currently signed for no RV parking. There are a handful of schools that do not have the no RV parking restrictions. I believe Peabody School and Roosevelt Schools are two schools that we have not posted yet because we have not experienced a concern expressed by the school at this point in time. But, you know, majority of the schools do have the no RV parking restriction within 500 feet of them.
And what does staff do when someone living in an RV has a child that goes to that school?
They just park a block further away and then walk their child to the school. So it's only a block, one block face. So if they move the next block, they can walk their child to the school. So it's not that far of a walk for a father or mother to walk their child to the school.
Okay, thank you.
Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we introduce the two ordinances mentioned in A and B in today's council agenda report.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Rouse?
Yeah, very quickly, I just want to expand on Mr. Klon's background on this. I was on part of the parking committee when this first came up, and we were trying to emulate other communities that had their interests and exits to the community marked as no RV street parking, is very, very common for RVs and boats on trailers and whatnot, not to be stored on block faces in residential areas or in other parts of the city where it wasn't appropriate. Other people that own RVs and boats have to either have a mooring for the boat or rent a space where these vehicles can be stored. It was about the vehicle, so it wasn't about any particular class or of people or resident. At that time, we got this in the court action, we ended up basically compromising and creating the new beginnings program. We do provide a certain amount of off-street parking in our city parking lots, which is monitored by the new beginnings program. Yeah, there's a limit to it, but there may be an unlimited number of applicants. So, the residents of this community have demanded constantly that we have some type of control and some type of limit in the situation as much as we can under the law. So, this has been an ongoing process for at least the 20-odd years that I've been involved in it. And the people that -- new beginnings do a wonderful job of monitoring and taking care of the folks that are there and trying to transition them out of their situation. But there are limits, and there are limits to everything we do. So, we have to be able to control what's on our streets, whether it's a boat, whether it's an RV, whether it's a school bus. It doesn't necessarily connote any type of lifestyle or kind of socioeconomic situation. It's just about the vehicle or the boat.
Anything else? Okay. Well, thank you to the ordinance committee, Mr. Klon, for, I mean, this balancing act, and you got to get the wording right, and I think this is going to work okay.
Madam Mayor, I won't be supporting the motion.
Okay.
I think three is excessive.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that's six, one. Okay, thank you. Item number 14.
Update of the council's procedural rules and appointment of an ad hoc council procedures committee.
Mr. Klon, you again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's been over five years since the council had a look at its procedural rules. A number of things have changed since then, and both my predecessor, Mr. Wiley, and I have been called upon to advise the council on how to handle various issues that come up. Key among them are
council on how to handle various issues that come up. Key among them are the rules for fair hearings that the Constitution requires the council follow when you're conducting what are called quasi-judicial hearings. Many of your land use appeal hearings or revocation of a towing permit or a conditional use permit are what the courts have called quasi-judicial hearings, meaning that the council is sitting like a judge and has to follow the constitutional fairness rules that apply to a court proceeding. Key among the limitations that the council has to live by in those situations is something we call a rule that discourages ex parte contacts. And an ex parte contact means basically meeting with the applicant or opponents of a matter outside of the courtroom, outside of the council chambers. So as you know, I've advised the council and the public to the extent I can that the council should discourage ex parte contacts. Why? It's not fair to one side or the other when you take evidence, have a conversation with the other side outside of the presence of all parties. So a basic rule of fairness that the courts have enforced against cities is that all sides be present when there are arguments being made. Now, there are other rules related to quasi-judicial proceedings as well. And the courts have shown a clear pattern in the last 10 years of getting exceedingly strict, I would say, in how they treat a city council acting like a quasi-judicial body. So questions like who bears the burden of proof, what constitutes valid evidence, all of those issues that you would expect in a court setting are now coming up in city council hearings. We've gone so far, for example, as to segregate functions in my office so that we're not accused of having the prosecutor on a permit revocation advising the judge. Someone from my office who I have no contact with on the matter will represent the department and I'll represent the city council. So these rules are, are real and they're strict. And unfortunately, in Santa Barbara, they're not written down. The vast majority of, of well-run cities in California have written council procedural rules that deal with quasi-judicial hearings. And the benefit of that is that everyone involved knows the rules of the game. The council here is well-advised, I hope, and understands what the rules are. But that doesn't do any good to your constituents who would wonder why you can't talk to them. It's perfectly natural for a constituent to want to speak to their elected official. But it's a difficult explanation to go through what I've gone through the last three or four minutes describing what the courts require of you. It's much easier and much more effective to put those rules down in rules of procedure that with the help of the city clerk, we would publish on the website and make generally available. So issue number one with the council's procedural rules as they exist today is that they say nothing about your obligations under the Constitution to conduct fair hearings. Issue number two has to do with how the Brown Act, which is the state's open meeting law, one of the package of sunshine laws that the state has passed to literally let the sun shine in on local government, how the Brown Act interacts with your procedural rules. You are permitted under the Brown Act to establish reasonable rules and regulations for how the public conducts itself at your meetings. And you've chosen to do so in some places in your, in your rules. For example, your last procedural resolution dating back to 2009 allows one minute for public speaking. Clearly, that rule has mutated over the years. The mayor offers a minimum of two minutes. There's no discretion apparent in that resolution that allows the extra time. And the council's current policy is different. So the rules need to be updated and they need the attention of the council to accomplish that. Third, Resolution 09-097 that I mentioned relies and carries forward the city's reliance on Roberts Rules of Order. Roberts Rules of Orders, Rules of Order are procedural rules designed for large bodies that conduct meetings over several days. They're really designed for a legislative body. And they don't work well for a city council where your meetings are conducted in a pretty compact span of time and with a relatively few number of members. So the rules and formalities of motions, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, are relatively arcane. And frankly, the council doesn't follow Roberts Rules. I am charged with being your parliamentarian and what I'd like to do is move forward with a revision to the rules of procedure the council follows so that we all understand and enforce those rules fairly. The League of California Cities is currently promoting a simplified version of rules of procedure called Rosenberg's Rules. That's, they're named after a judge in Northern California who took Roberts Rules and cut it down to size to fit local government. So what I'd like to share with an ad hoc committee that I'm asking the council to form is the concepts in Rosenberg's Rules and offering, again, a simplified way to conduct meetings. Finally, let me mention Chapter 2.04 of the Municipal Code. We have a situation where we have really neither fish nor fowl in that the council has a procedural resolution on the one hand, and at the same time, you have a Municipal Code chapter that has many rules that I know some of you are even unaware of. I've been unaware of them until I started studying for this project. One of those rules, for example, permits a single council member to request me to draft a charter amendment. I can't imagine that a majority of the council would want that to happen, but that's in the Municipal Code now. That needs to be addressed. In addition, there are unconstitutional rules governing decorum in the Municipal Code. For example, impertinent remarks from the public are forbidden. There is clear California and federal case law that says you can't stop someone from being impertinent. You can stop someone from disrupting a meeting, but impertinence is actually a virtue in the democratic process, I'm afraid. So those four areas, the quasi-judicial procedures, the Brown Act, the updating of the resolution and updating of the Municipal Code chapter are the reasons I've come forward to the council to ask you to assign an ad hoc committee to work with the city clerk and myself over the next three to six months to update the council's procedural rules. Three to six months is meant to allow the clerk and I a fair amount of time to do the work. I think we're looking at probably three or four meetings with an ad hoc committee, maybe two to four hours of time. So I'd encourage the council to help us out with that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Murio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Cullon, on the first item about quasi-judicial proceedings, for the public listening, that's when one of our, well, one instance is when a design review board has okayed something and then someone appeals it, correct?
Exactly. The council functions in three capacities. An administrative capacity, that might be when you're authorizing the expenditure of money. Legislative capacity, that would be like what you just did in amending the RV ordinance, you're making law for the future. And the quasi-judicial capacity where you're applying law to a specific set of facts. So it would be that third category.
And your concern is, is if we have ex parte communication related to an appeal, that we might get sued by one side that thinks we've favored the person that we met with? Something like that?
That's exactly the concern. The council is obligated by the Constitution to conduct a fair hearing. And my concern is, again, not with the council, it's with the public that doesn't understand these rules. And we've made really only a minimal effort to educate the public through the tools we have available, which are things like the website and producing a procedural manual that, that lays out the rules of the road.
I'm supportive, Madam Mayor, of these suggestions by our city attorney. And I'd like to volunteer to be on the committee.
I think I heard also Mr. White and Mr. Hotchkiss. Was that also the three? If that, I mean, I just heard, heard rumblings out there of the three of you. So just put that there, out there. Mr. Hart?
I, I think that conforming the council operations resolution to the Municipal Code makes perfect sense. And I think, obviously, we need to update the provisions regarding the Brown Act, you know, particularly the length of public comment time period. But I, I want, I want to reserve the ability for council members to meet with constituents even in quasi-judicial proceedings and, and disclose those communications. And as a practical matter, my practice has been to meet with both sides in a way to be fair. And I think that there are many instances where the additional time that that provides people to make their case and to really think about that is valuable to me. And I, you know, I've been on the Planning Commission for eight years, the council for eight years, I was on the California Coastal Commission, that, that process, in my experience, works really well. And I don't think it is helpful to the public discourse to have people, to be able to tell people, "I can't talk to you." And so that's my bias about this. I, I understand why you want to open this box and look at these things, but just going into that process, that's my, my view.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think Mr. Hart makes an excellent argument, but not for the conclusion that he comes to. The very point of having a public debate or presentation is for all of one's arguments, pro and con, to be aired for not only council but for the public. And so if extrajudicial conversations take place, sometimes those do not make it to the council floor. If we restrict debate to the council floor, it means that everything has to be forthcoming for public understanding. So I understand, and I function the way Mr. Hart has talked about, listening to people and saying, "Yes, I understand." But on reflection, it seems to me better procedurally to say, "Sorry, make your presentation public and we'll be part of the public as will those who are watching." So I think that Mr. Cullon's suggestions are excellent and I support him. And I too would be happy if the mayor would like me to, to serve on the ad hoc committee.
Okay. I just re-looked at the code and apparently the last six years, I could have called for a special meeting within five hours' notice. I didn't even know. I mean, I could have done it at midnight, as long as I, you know, just...
Well, and we're not allowed to get out of our seats unless you say it's okay by these old rules.
Apparently, apparently. I should have read this a little more carefully. Maybe I'll do something before it comes back. No, I'm just kidding. You know, on, on the issue at hand, though, I guess in the committee can, can grapple with this. It seems to me there's some legal issues for sure and we want to make sure we stay in compliance with the law. If there are options available so long as disclosure happens, then, you know, you give discretion to each one of us to determine what happens. And in the public hearing, you know, you actually have to disclose it. So then people know where, where you're coming from. But I guess that's a discussion that I think the committee can have. So we do need a motion on the item with the members of the subcommittee. Mr. Rouse, you want to move the recommendation? You want to name the subcommittee members?
Move the recommendation. Move the appointment of Mr. Hotchkiss, Mr. White, and Ms. Murio to the subcommittee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Have fun with that. Okay. Item number 15.
Annual wastewater collection system report.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director, and we're here today to update you on the work that we've completed in the wastewater section in the past year as well as our projections for the coming year. Mr. Toth, Chris Toth, our wastewater system manager, will be making the presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bjork.
Well, we're here to talk about our performance in calendar year 14 with the...
Oh, pardon me. We're here to talk about our performance in calendar year 14 with the city's wastewater collection system. And so in summary, we're going to touch on these key items. We're going to provide collection system information, provide a brief background on our consent decree, talk about our SSO, sanitary sewer overflow history in the past several years, talk about our ongoing sewer system maintenance, and then our capital work as it involves condition assessment and pipe rehabilitation, and then briefly touch on the consent decree's cost history. So our collection system is 257 miles of gravity sewer main. And almost all of it is small diameter pipe, six-inch and eight-inch diameter pipe. Almost all of it is made of vitrified clay, a very hardy material that can withstand decades and decades of use as sewer conveyance pipage. The average age of our pipes are 52 years old or older. And so we are in, we are an aging wastewater collection system. And we do have seven sewer lift stations in our collection system, which also comprise two miles of force mains, pressure pipe. So by way of consent decree background, prior to 2011, we did have what would be considered a high number of sanitary sewer overflow events. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But we had more than 10 SSO events per 100 miles of collection system per year. And when you get into the double digits numbers of spills per 100 miles per year, that's considered high throughout the country. So we hired consultants to assist us in updating our collection system work practices in 2011. The non-governmental organization Channel Keeper filed a court complaint against the city in April 2011. And we worked with Channel Keeper and consent decree was filed approximately a year later in May of 2012. That prescribes what we do from 2012 through 2016. The framework was basically to develop a maintenance management system and improve our performance, our operational performance, and also our ability to execute our capital improvement program. The consent decree set SSO reduction standards, goals for continued improvement and reduction of SSOs. And with that, the consent decree prescribed an SSO reduction plan document be prepared whenever we did not meet our performance goals for a given calendar year. So it provided a mechanism to modify the management of our collection system to achieve future SSO reduction. Milestones that we've completed to date are extensive. We've provided substantive development of our SSMP, or Sewer System Management Plan documentation, subordinate work plans, and implementation training and support to achieve all these consent decree activities. And we paid over $1 million so far in consultant services as we prepared all that documentation and, and provided training and have executed this systematic framework. Detailed work plans that support the SSMP documentation include our fat soil and grease program, SSO response report mechanisms, sewer cleaning work plans, sewer condition assessment, capacity assurance, pump station assessment and operational work plans, as well as a substantive amount of work that went into generating a new systematic database for our activities and coordinating GIS mapping development and implementation for all those activities. Also, in the past several years, we've successfully completed our capital improvement projects and have submitted all the annual reports required by the consent decree. To talk briefly about SSO history, our SSO reduction performance standards for the consent decree prescribe the schedule of SSO event limits. And as you can see, we've had some unfortunate years and we've had a good year. So we went from 20 spills in 2012 to nine spills in 2013. This last year, we were at 23 spills and we've had six SSO events to date in 2015. The event history shows that if we go back to more or less pre-consent decree, to post-consent decree history, one could interpret it as good or bad, but I choose to interpret it as good, and that we've essentially reduced the SSO events by over 50% in the last several years. You can see them kind of jumping up and down there, but we're in a range somewhere between 10 and 25 SSOs. And we're working to improve that performance. And that prior to the consent decree, we were well above that. We were in a range that was much higher. When you look at volumes, we've significantly reduced the gallonage of spill associated with these SSO events. And that even though 2014 incurred 23 SSO events, the total gallonage of that really spilled was less than 4,000 gallons. And indeed of that, only two events were... And indeed of that, only two events were public water spills, that were spills that go to creeks or waterways, and the volume associated with those two events were less than 600 gallons. From an SSO event perspective, those are small gallonage numbers. And while we think every gallon spilled is an unfortunate event, it's still fairly low when we get compared with many other public agencies throughout the country. So what caused these spills? Well, roots were clearly a large cause this past year. And the vast majority of spills were in six-inch diameter pipes. And those that weren't were in eight-inch diameter pipes, so fairly small diameter pipes. Most of the spills were caused by roots, and you can see after that, it's debris and grease largely as the other two factors. Other is sort of a combination of a variety of events that are unique in nature and don't really follow a consistent trend. A couple of them were vandalism-related, and just some other outlying events that are hard to categorize, and so we classify them as other. There was a report prepared by the State Water Resources Control Board that covered the fiscal year 13 data statewide, and it provides a bunch of statistics for all reporting in California public agencies. There's a similar report that just came out this last year, it came out a couple months ago. We really relied on the FY13 SSO report for this reporting period, but the similar trends occur for the most latest data that the state supplied. And so when we compare ourselves with average systems, we've done a little bit worse in terms of SSO events per 100 miles per year. But when we compare ourselves to similar systems, these are older wastewater collection systems in the state where more than half their pipe is more than 52 years old, we're doing a little better. So while we think it's unfortunate that we've had this uptick in SSO events in 2014, we're certainly not the worst of the worst in terms of the statewide performance of public agencies. In terms of SSO volume comparisons, we do very well. We spilled approximately 60 gallons per thousand capita per year in 2014, and the state average was well above that. So this is just a picture to show a somewhat typical, very small SSO event. It's a three-gallon spill. Staff is just arriving at the scene, they're working to set up containment and control, and then ultimately correct the SSO. But it's not, it's not a large-scale environmental issue. The average spill is a very small gallonage, it does not reach public waters. We're unhappy that it's occurred, and we're working to make our system better so that we don't spill as much in the future. But this is just to show that this is sort of what a small SSO event looks like on the street. In terms of sewer system maintenance, we clean a lot of pipe every year. In 2014, we've cleaned 144 geographic miles, which involve 237 cleaning miles. What that means is that we clean pipes multiple times in a given year because of either debris collecting in them or roots collecting in them or so, or grease. And so with that, it's a substantial amount of pipes that we are cleaning every year, considering our entire system is 257 miles. We find that most of the pipe that we clean is clear or light, that the condition findings therein are not that, all the pipes are just filled with roots and grease and debris. Most of the pipes we clean are in good condition and clear, and we use the condition findings to alter the cleaning schedule for those pipes. In terms of our fog program, we do have a commercial fat soil and grease program, which is designed to assist restaurants so that we keep those materials out of our sewer system. We've beefed up the inspection program in the previous year, 2014. We utilize a consultant contract to enhance our program improvements. We've greatly increased our inspections in 2014. Since we've conducted well over 400 inspections in 2014, and in the past, we've only conducted something on the order of 100 to 130 inspections per year prior to 2014. Our sewer lateral inspection program is, it's part of our Title 14 municipal code. It's focused on commercial rental and business property inspections. Our goal is to initiate 800 inspection cases each year for multifamily and businesses. We're working very hard to maintain that schedule. There are approximately 8,000 commercial sewer laterals in the city, so we're trying to hit them on a 10-year timeframe. And we do also conduct residential property slip inspections based upon fixture units added or home additions, or city CCTV inspections that indicate from the public sewer main that there are defective laterals at the sewer main. This picture shows roots that we've gotten actually in 2015. It caused an SSO. It was caused by private lateral roots being pushed into the city sewer main. And you can see, if we pulled that root mass out, it would form a long, a long, long string. It's, it just shows that our system is largely small diameter pipe, and that even though we keep the sewer system well-maintained, that there are events that occur that cause public spills because of materials that come into the sewer system that are from private sewer laterals. So in terms of pipe condition assessment, we've done a lot of pipe condition assessment in the last several years. And by PACP scores, we're talking about five being bad and zero being really good. And so if you look at the 2013 mileage and the 2014 mileage, and you look at PACP scores of fours and fives, you see that over the last two years, we've identified approximately 30 miles of pipe that needs to be repaired or rehabilitated. And you know from our, from our prior discussions that we're currently doing less than that, and so we'll talk just a minute about that, but we found a lot of pipe that needs to be fixed. These are some pictures of examples of grade-five defects in pipes and what they look like. And so these clearly are pipes that need to be rehabilitated soon. In terms of pipe repair and rehabilitation work, you see the mileage here of what we've done in the last several years, both for our accelerated pipe program and our regular pipe program. It's a substantial amount of pipe. It is not keeping up with what we found PAPC score-wise from our assessment. So you can see that in the last couple, few years, that we've done approximately 15 miles of pipe, and we found 30 miles of pipe that we need to fix. So we're working on it, but we've got a backlog of sewer pipe that needs to be fixed up. And so by year's end, we'll have a .3-mile surplus, we hope, in our accelerated pipe replacement rehab schedule per the consent decree, and we'll be well above our regular pipe rehab and replacement requirement. That's part of our city council goal of 1% per year of rehab. So in terms of costs, we are maintaining all our requirements with the consent decree of what we need to spend. And actually, in 2012 and in 2014, we have spent way above what was required under the consent decree cap. And what we're planning to do this calendar year is to expand our pilot chemical root control program. We set a goal and completed 15 miles in 2014, and we plan to do even more in 2014 to really aggressively go after roots that we've found that are in key pipes that need to be cleaned frequently. We're going to continue our fat soil and grease control program contract this year, and then we're going to utilize and are utilizing some computer flow model software that we've developed over the last year and a half that helps us analyze system flows on a pipe-specific basis throughout our collection system, even our smallest diameter pipes, our six-inch and eight-inch pipes. And so in summary, we're committed to achieving SSO performance improvements. We want to be a very best-in-class performance agency. We've achieved compliance with our consent decree activities in 2014, and that our SSO performance is above average in comparison with similar-aged systems in the state. The SSO reduction plan that was prepared this year provides mechanisms for continued improvement in our management practices of our collection system. We have improved our SSO reduction performance in recent years. We haven't met the performance goal for calendar year 14 in the consent decree, but over the last several years, we've decreased our SSO rate by 50% or more, and that's a marked improvement in performance. And we just note that SSO reduction performance is not a linear process. We can't just turn the dial and say, "Okay, we've implemented all these activities, so we're going to turn the SSO event dial down now." It's not the way the system behaves. It's a plan-do-check-act system. And so we've implemented this systematic approach. Every year, we're getting feedback on what to do to improve it, and we're improving it in a stable, rational manner to achieve long-term results. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before Ms. Redmond comes up, any questions first from council? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Members. When you talk about the cleaning, obviously you're talking about the mains and then the laterals are the laterals, and so the cleaning, you can clean the main, but the lateral remains the same, is that correct?
That's correct. The city does not own or maintain the laterals. Now, the pilot, the pilot chemical root control program that we mentioned, what that does allow us to do is when we root foam a pipe and we put chemical in a city sewer main, that chemical typically will extend a few inches to a foot or so inside of a lateral that's connected to the main. And so those private lateral roots that grow right at that connection point to the main, we're hopeful we'll be able to address. But, but we do not actively maintain private sewer laterals.
So, and would you say the bulk of our SSOs are probably lateral-related? Is that, is that hard to say?
No, no, no. Well, we have a number of private SSOs, but those are different events. No, I'm not trying to imply that. We have, we have SSOs that are in city mains, caused by materials in city mains, and primarily they're in small diameter pipes, six-inch pipes largely. But a subset of that is that lateral roots do get discharged into the public sewer system, and occasionally they do cause SSOs that are considered public city SSOs.
All right. And then this, the proliferation of, I can't say the word, a bunch of roots. We always usually associate sewer issues with very wet, heavy rain years, and here in very, very dry times, is that because the roots are, trees are actively looking for water? Is that, is that a fair statement, or?
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, this is a question that Councilmember Hart asked last year, as I recall. And I've come to the conclusion that roots love water, and they're aggressively going to attack water wherever it lives, no matter if it's wet or dry. There are some people that make the statement that, yes, roots are more seeking water in sewer mains in dry years, in wet years. And I've heard it reversed. But I have not seen any definitive study or conclusion that has factually proved roots are more problematic in droughts as opposed to wet weather, or vice versa.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got a little lost on slide 23. What, what does PACP stand for? And so that the camera goes in there, and then there's...
It's a Pipeline Association Certification Program, I believe it's what it is. It's put together by an organization that of both private and public sector contributors that standardized how conditions, both maintenance and structural conditions in pipelines that are televised, how they're rated, so that one agency doesn't rate them one way and another agency rates them another way. This is sort of a standardization so that all agencies can be trained and report out similar findings on what they find in the pipe. But we actually put these closed-circuit television cameras inside pipes, city sewer mains, and we televise them. And as we televise the length of the pipe from sewer manhole to manhole, we grade conditions, both structural and maintenance conditions that are found inside the pipe, and report out on that. And so in a simplified way, they get graded then, and the worst pipes get a grade-five or a grade-four. And what you're seeing there under the mileage columns are the number of miles of pipe each year, 2013 and 2014, that we found from all that we televised that had the worst structural conditions. And so you see that most of the pipes we televised are good. They're, they have a PAP score of zero or one. But there still is a significant amount of pipe that we found to be bad, as a score of five or four. And so that's 30 miles of pipe that we found in the last two years, and we're currently, we're currently, in the last three years, we have rehabilitated roughly 14 to 15 miles. So we found 35, 30 miles of bad pipe, we fixed half of them.
Okay, okay, thanks. That, I, I, thank you. I just, like I said, I didn't, I got lost. So in slide 11, you point out the causes of these spills, and other, you know, second to roots is the largest cause.
Right.
And you said vandalism and some other stuff.
Vandalism was three, two were structural, and I think two were, were sort of unique. One was we cleaned, we were cleaning a city sewer main, and we actually backed up the spray, because when we clean a sewer pipe, we're hydrogening. It's water that's being sprayed at a very high pressure, like 2,000 PSI. And in one instance, the water actually went up the sewer lateral, came out the cleanout in the yard, and went onto the ground. That is a public sewer spill.
Oh, okay. I, I'm just pointing it out, and I'm sure you have a way to address those incidents. If there's a way to, it sounds like, can you plan for them? Maybe it sounds like things that you can't plan for, I'm not sure.
Well, well, for the unusual things, like, like back pressuring a house, we certainly find out about it. We, we, we record it in our computerized maintenance management system, so there is a note put in for the cleaning crew, so the next time they go to clean that pipe, they're alerted to clean that pipe at a lower pressure. And note that there was a previous spill of specific residents.
Thank you, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Hachikis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When, when the problem occurs because of a private sewer lateral encroaching into the public main, do we send the folks a letter and say, "Please clean out your sewer lateral," or?
If we could identify which private lateral it was, we would have that communication, but mostly we can't.
Really?
Because, because it's happened somewhere, sometime, that root mass usually floats downstream for some small period of time and then stops somewhere. And that's where the blockage is formed, and that's where the spill occurs.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachikis, there are sort of two issues associated with that. If the roots are growing in from a private lateral and block our sewer main and cause a spill, it's our spill, it's still a public spill. But when we, if we are able to identify that, we do ask them to clean it, but we also require they inspect under the sewer lateral inspection program so that they will have a long-term correction for that pipe as well, so it doesn't just reoccur. The other way that we try and get ahead of the private lateral spec, problem is through our CCTV, our inspection program. When we observe roots growing in during our inspection of our sewer pipes, we will also send a letter to the property owners saying, "You need to look at your pipe, your pipe, because it looks like it's got defects that are allowing roots into our system." So we try and stay ahead of it in that way.
And lateral inspections remain optional, is that correct? Private ones?
They remain optional, except when we require them, which is instances such as when we identify a defect. So if we saw a situation where pipe roots are growing into the pipe during our routine inspection, we can require a, an inspection and repair as needed.
Do we have any idea the percent participation with sale or purchase of a home?
Very minimal.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hart?
So it, when people clean out their own laterals, they're pushing the roots out through the pipe, and they end up in our pipes. And that's fundamental, that's exactly what we're asking people to do, is clean their own laterals, and that's causing a problem for us.
Yes.
And that's kind of inevitable. There's really nothing we can do about that.
Well, I mean, as, as Ms. Bjork says, it's a small percentage of our SSO events, but it does happen. And it depends upon the amount of the root mass in the lateral, and then... And it depends upon the amount of the root mass in the lateral and the type of methods and techniques that the plumber uses to take it, you know, to get them out. Sometimes, if they use high-pressure water jetters, they'll obliterate the roots in the lateral, and they'll come down as fine little pieces. But if they're mechanically rotting the roots, often the root mass will come straight down.
So, that picture that you used that showed the big mass, that's kind of extraordinary. That's not a typical result of a lateral cleaning?
That is not a typical SSO event from a lateral. I mean, it's not a typical result of a sewer lateral cleaning event.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Redmond, come on up. And per the decree, you have up to 20 minutes, as you know.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the city's 2014 Annual Wastewater Collection System Report, Annual Exfiltration Abatement Program Plan, and SSO Reduction Action Plan. We appreciate the time that your staff has taken to prepare these reports, which we, our attorneys and our expert, have carefully reviewed. First, I want to acknowledge and thank you and your staff for the additional effort that has been made to accelerate improvements to the city's sewer system. Channel Keeper recognizes that this has been and will continue to be a lot of hard work, and that the city has invested substantial time and resources toward complying with our settlement agreement, and we appreciate that. We are happy to see that the city rehabilitated and repaired 5.6 miles of sewer mains in 2014, including 2.3 miles, which have been identified as high risk, as having a high risk of exfiltration. This work exceeded the obligation in our consent decree by 0.8 miles for non-high-risk pipe and 0.3 miles for high-risk pipe, thereby reducing the city's shortfall in high-risk pipe repair from 2014 to 0.3 miles. We appreciate the city's going above and beyond its 2014 obligations in this effort and making up for the shortfall from 2012. And we also appreciate the stated commitment in the annual report to make up for the remaining shortfall in high-risk pipe repair this year. We are, however, deeply disappointed, as no doubt you and your staff are as well, with the city's failure to meet the SSO reduction performance standard for 2014. The maximum number of spills allowed under our CD for 2014 was 12, but the city had 23, nearly twice that goal, spilling 5,400 gallons of sewage, 4,000 gallons, or 74% of which was not recovered, and which therefore posed a risk to public health and the environment. This is the second year of the three years of our five-year CD so far that the city has exceeded the maximum numbers of spills allowed. Unlike Mr. Toth, I don't view this as a positive trend. When the SSO standard is exceeded, it triggers a requirement in our CD for the city to prepare an SSO Reduction Action Plan, which has been done. We took the time to review the plan in detail, as did our expert, Dr. Bruce Bell, and we sent your staff a seven-page letter outlining a number of concerns with the plan, which I forwarded to you earlier today. The CD requires that the plan be designed to achieve compliance with the SSO Reduction Performance Standard for the following year, which in 2015 is 10 spills. As such, the plan should present a thorough engineering analysis that includes a quantitative assessment of spill performance and program elements in years past, and an analysis of how changes to those elements are expected to achieve the required results. Unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be a discernible relationship between the action plan and achieving the spill standard for 2015. I'll give you just one example. The plan includes a focus on cleaning pipes with heavy or moderate roots, despite the fact that 60% of the spills caused by roots in 2014 were in pipes rated as having light root clogging. It further plans a 5% increase in mechanical pipe cleaning mileage, yet doesn't state how this will achieve the spill standard, particularly in light of the fact that there was a 5% net increase in cleaning frequency in 2014, a year when spills more than doubled from the previous year. In our letter, we asked your staff to engage in a discussion with us about ways to improve the plan such that it will be truly effective in reducing spills moving forward. Your staff sent us a cursory response, which I also forwarded you earlier today, indicating that they are not interested in discussing improvements to the plan with us. Exceeding the spill standard last year by nearly 100%, and exceeding the standards for two of the three years that our CD has been in effect, is a problem, not only for the city, but also for Channel Keeper and for our community as a whole. And as Mr. Toth noted earlier, there have already been six spills in 2015, indicating that the city will very likely exceed the spill standard of 10 for this year. Despite the directive in our CD dictating that disputes as to the adequacy of the action plan are to be resolved via dispute resolution, and despite your staff's rebuke of our request to discuss improvements to the plan, Channel Keeper does not plan to invoke the court's intervention at this time. Channel Keeper wants to work with the city to address the problem. We have at our disposal the expertise of Dr. Bruce Bell, who is a highly regarded environmental engineer and professor with more than 40 years of experience teaching in helping municipalities across the nation develop effective sewer system management plans and SSO reduction plans. Let me reiterate, we are here to help, not to hinder. Therefore, I respectfully ask you to direct your staff to engage in a meaningful discussion with us to help develop an effective SSO action plan that will ensure the city meets the spill standards this year and thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before it comes back to us, we do have a public comment. Speaker slipped here for Tom Becker. Come on up.
I was actually asked to ask this question. The lawsuit that Channel Keepers filed during the settlement, somebody would like to know how much Channel Keeper was paid by the city as part of that settlement. We understand that the amount was in the millions of dollars. This is a considerable issue before, for the voters, certainly, considering that you have $200 million backlog of maintenance, and you're probably going to be asking the people to increase their own taxes. So, we would just like to know if somebody on staff can tell the taxpayers what the city paid Channel Keepers in that settlement? And we understand it's in the millions. Thank you.
Okay, it goes back to the council. Just to clarify that, we did raise rates to go towards the work. I don't believe, I remember, Channel Keeper getting millions of dollars. There was, I believe, a $400,000 amount that went to a project, maybe, Ms. Bjork, if you could.
Oh, gosh.
And it didn't even go to, it didn't even go to Channel Keeper, it went to another nonprofit organization.
Madam Mayor, I'm a little fuzzy on the amounts. I think it was $125,000 to do a project to reduce the effects of runoff and pollution to our local waters. And then, there was the attorney's fee settlement. But the bulk of the increased costs from the litigation have been directed into our system for pipe improvement, which the rate increase was to support that increased level of pipe replacement.
Right. And just to be clear for Mr. Becker, any of the amounts, higher, low, whatever you want to, you don't have to come up, I'm just saying that it's not, it's not general...
I just wanted to offer to take turns.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't remember. Maybe that's the 400 number, but I don't remember. It's about that. And again, it's not general fund money, just so people know, not to say that that's good or bad or indifferent, just that it's water, based on the wastewater rates, that's how all of this was paid for. Okay, so, it's now to the council. Ms. Mario?
Thank you for the report, staff and Channel Keeper. And I think it would be prudent for our staff to meet with Channel Keeper. And I'd like to move that, Madam Mayor. I move that we direct our staff to meet with Channel Keeper on this latest round of trying to keep the city from having sewage spills.
Okay, so, moved in seconds. So, okay, just to the motion, can you explain what has been done and connect with what's being requested? And so, what this motion would actually entail? I'm just trying to understand the, because you've met with Channel Keeper. So, I understand it. You have to, under the consent decree, Channel Keeper is asking for additional discussion, correct? That's how I'm understanding Channel Keeper. So, could you please describe what's under the consent decree and what, how you would go about if this would pass?
Well, my brief understanding is, what we received was Channel Keeper comment letter related to one of our three annual reports that we submitted, the SSO Reduction Action Plan. And we responded to their comments. The next step would be for Channel Keeper to basically send us a letter wanting to have informal dispute resolution processes. If we want to go more informal than that, pending any legal review, we're happy to do that at any time. But that's my understanding, limited as it may be. That's my understanding of what we just went through. They provided us comments to one of our annual reports, and we responded to their comments.
Okay. Mr. Klon?
The attorney's fees were $337,500.
Okay, thank you. I knew around 400 was in my head. Ms. Bjork?
Madam Mayor, with regard to the Channel Keeper input, the predominant input was that the sewer system reduction action plan failed to perform a complex engineering analysis to demonstrate that additional efforts would ensure compliance with the sewer system overflow goals. The overall best management framework that we have put in place with the assistance of consultants and technical trainers is, in its entirety, designed and engineered to achieve the goals. The sewer system action, reduction action plan provides a mechanism within the consent decree, if in fact it is not achieving those goals, to compel the city to go in and make adjustments to improve performance. And certainly, that's what we've done. We have provided extensive documentation as to why we believe, why we're doing what we're doing and what outcomes we expect to have. And certainly, if we have, if Channel Keeper has specific suggestions to us for things that they see missing, we'd be happy to hear them. But the primary comment that we've gotten so far is that you need to do an engineering analysis that you haven't done. I guess, we believe we have done the analysis and that we're taking actions to seek improvement through this plan-do-check-act approach. But certainly, if they would like to continue to have dialogue and can bring us specific suggestions, we would be very happy to hear those.
Okay. Mr. Hart?
Maybe Ms. Redmond can come up and be more precise about what exactly you want to do in that dialogue. I'm at a disadvantage. I got your letter today, but it was seven pages, and I was trying to read it on my phone, and it was really hard to do. So, if you could just come and clarify exactly what the letter said and what you're looking to achieve. I think everybody's sympathetic to having a dialogue that results in everybody feeling better about moving forward, and I appreciate your comments about the staff trying hard to make that happen, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the comment from the gentleman briefly, that Channel Keeper didn't receive any of that money. It was for our attorneys, who are not part of Santa Barbara Channel Keeper, they're outside council. So, yes, the letter does lay out in detail, and Dr. Bruce Bell helped us, you know, review the plan and prepare the comments. One of them was the cleaning point that I mentioned in my comments. So, if we're focused on cleaning those with heavy and medium roots, but most of the spills are happening in light roots, how is that going to achieve a reduction in the spills? Vandalism.
You know, just that point, and I don't mean to argue and everything, but intuitively, it seems, sounds like, what do you do about that? You know, you're testing, you're checking, and you're going after what appears to be the thing that would be the most likely to cause problems. And ironically, it isn't turning out to be that. I don't know what we would do practically different about that, and I don't know...
I mean, perhaps it's a location, a geographical analysis, and perhaps it's a closer analysis of laterals in those areas. I mean, I'm certainly not the expert, so I'm just sort of relaying our experts' recommendations. Another recommendation was three of the spills were caused by vandalism. We suggested perhaps if there's a pattern in where those are happening, you could put locks on the manholes, is another suggestion. With the cleaning, you know, we were concerned about, like I said, the fact that they're proposing a 5% increase in cleaning, but they did that last year, and there were more than twice as many spills as the year before. So, how do you, I guess we're looking for how, what the actions are proposed are tying to, that we're going to do this, and we anticipate this is going to reduce root spills with pipes that have heavy roots by three spills per year, that sort of analysis, so that we can actually see, we can only have 10, we can only have four more spills this year. What are we going to do to make sure that we only have four more spills or less this year? Sort of tying the actions to what you hope to achieve in terms of spill reductions to those various actions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, just speaking to the motion and not really understanding all the engineering issues at the heart of this, I do believe that our engineering staff does understand the issues. And we received the letter from Channel Keeper today, the day of the meeting. I don't really think that it's a good idea for us to direct staff to take action on something that probably, I certainly haven't read in detail, I don't know about the rest of you. When we get materials the day of the meeting, it's kind of hard to deal with them. So, I believe that the suggestion that if Channel Keeper's engineering staff has specific suggestions to make to us, that's fine. And I'm sure our staff will be happy to listen to those. But I don't think we want to be directing staff to enter into something else that's not part of the consent decree framework, which was difficult to arrive at and very expensive to arrive at. So, that's why I will vote against this motion. But I agree, again, if Channel Keeper's engineering staff has something useful to suggest, of course, we want to hear it, so.
So, I'm hearing staff is willing to talk to Channel Keeper, I'm hearing Channel Keeper is willing to talk to staff. I don't know if we need a motion that, you know, creates something that's not necessary in terms of a split vote about whether or not you should talk. But if you're going to plan to talk, I mean, can we just tell you to talk? Is that, I think, we're all nodding our heads, could you just talk amongst yourselves, kind of thing? Okay. I don't mean to be glib about it, but I think it's important that if that's something you said you were willing to do, you want to do, it'll happen. I don't think we need a motion to make you talk to each other, so. I don't, but I guess there's a motion on the table, we could, we could ask to drop it, but I think, I think it's already there, that that's going to happen anyway.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I? The consent decree describes an informal dispute resolution process that I understood Channel Keeper not to be invoking. So, I think we're talking about something less than informal dispute resolution, and certainly, the staff can have those conversations. And in fairness to Channel Keeper, there was an earlier letter, April 24, I believe, that was directed to my staff and to the city's outside council. I don't know what the council received today, but there was an earlier letter and a reply from your staff yesterday.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hachakis?
I would just suggest or ask the motion makers to, in light of your comments and of both, all parties here, to make, to withdraw your motion and encourage informal conversations that, in fact, we want to happen.
I think the motion was for those informal conversations to go forward. It was clear that Channel Keeper is not invoking a legal trigger related to the situation.
Right, but the mayor's point is we don't need a motion for that, because they're already agreed.
Well, it goes both ways. We don't need a motion, but there's no harm in the motion either, so, either way. I mean, the motion is just to do what you're going to do, and Channel Keeper is not invoking the dispute resolution process, so we're, I think what we're doing with the motion is just saying, yes, we want to have a dialogue, we want to continue, we want to move forward. That's simply that.
Okay, all right. So, there's a motion on the table, there's no more lights on, we know what the motion is, is so they have some more informal conversations than what's listed in the consent decree. I think that's the gist of the motion, right? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, I think that's a 4-3, yes. I think it's, Mario, Hart, myself, and White, aye, is that correct? Hachakis, Rouse, and Francisco, no. Okay? Okay. All right. Any other comments on the topic here? Okay. I just want to end by saying, I know all of us are trying to get to the same solution, which is reduced number of SSOs, and we'll get there. I know we're putting a lot of time, effort, and resources into it, and, you know, Mother Nature is going to do what Mother Nature is going to do, roots are going to do what they're going to do. And if we can avoid some things by knowing more about what causes SSOs, then we're better off for it. And you're doing a lot of work, I appreciate the report. Thank you. All right. So, item number 16.
Report on Vision Zero to Reduce Injuries and Fatalities to Zero on City Streets.
Mr. Dayton?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. We had a request from the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition and the Coalition of Sustainable Transportation. They sent a letter, which is in your packet, to request that the council adopt a policy on Vision Zero. And then, at a recent bike plant, we were here for the bike plan, I think, last month, you all did agree to have that, come us come back and give you what that is. So, this item today is to tell you what is Vision Zero, and we've been doing some investigating to find out what it is. It's fairly new. Some of us on the staff were familiar with this, others weren't. But what it is, is it's a multinational program to, or could be characterized even as a movement, which aims to achieve roadway systems that have no fatalities or even serious injuries. So, it's to reduce those fatalities to zero or even limit the... So it's to reduce those fatalities to zero or even limit the serious injuries. We've seen this started in Sweden, apparently. It's moved to other places in Europe. San Francisco and New York have also adopted such a policy. The San Francisco policy, there's information in your packet about the San Francisco policy. And then the graphic down below here just shows the deaths in Santa Barbara, the fatalities in Santa Barbara, and the injuries in the last 10 years. And the one thing that stands out from those statistics is that pedestrians and bicycles are a little bit more vulnerable in terms of fatality. This is from the San Francisco plan, kind of bullets out in the neatest form we found about exactly what it does. And kind of going through the list here, builds a better and safer streets sooner, so it would be, the council would be saying, okay, we want safe streets, we want them now, so it's a prioritization. Education on public and traffic safety really is, would be prominent with such a policy. Law enforcement would go up, primarily a focus on speeding, because speeding plays a big factor, which I'll explain in a minute, about increased fatalities. And then prioritizing our resources on initiatives that save lives, so refocusing our priorities. The policy really talks about creating a culture within the city that has a high awareness between users on the road about safety. So respect between users, that kind of thing. And then something that's kind of new, and probably the newest aspect of it, is the policy assumes that people are going to make mistakes on the road. So the question is, how can our facilities be designed so that when people do make mistakes, you avoid fatalities? And that's kind of the nuance of the program. How does it work? It works by having engineering enforcement highly coordinated and then having an overlay education program. We like to refer to this as the four Es. So PD and engineering working very closely together, and then having an education. I like to call that, it's probably more like a marketing program, kind of like recycle, right? You know, there was a movement, a marketing program that really changed a culture. That's the kind of movement it requires. And then evaluation, how are we actually doing? Are we actually saving lives? So looking at the program and then adjusting the program as you go along. How would it work here in Santa Barbara? Essentially, we would be putting, this policy would create a Vision Zero lens in which we're going to then be looking at all the stuff in Public Works and some in PD on our capital programs and operations maintenance. So looking through all the things we're doing and spending money on through that lens with, and then prioritizing safety in all those decisions. There's location-specific strategies, system-wide strategies, and then the education component I've been talking about, to give you an idea of what we're doing now, because it's not like we're not coordinated now. In fact, Public Works and PD are highly coordinated. And we're primarily, the way we're operating right now is on the location-specific strategies. So what's happening is Derek Bailey in engineering is looking at the data and saying, okay, well here's a hotspot and here's where we're having a lot of collisions, so what could we do to change the engineering of the roadway to improve that situation? Perfect example is at Anacapa and Correo, putting the overhead signal, that we had a collision, repeating collision there, and that overhead signal improved that situation with visibility quite a bit. PD's operating the same. They're looking at the data as well. And then they're saying, okay, so where are the hotspots? Let's do enforcement at those locations where we're seeing collisions. The difference is, in the system-wide strategy, is you're looking at taking that same approach, but more shotgun across the city. So for now, like, for instance, we might be doing, we do, for instance, ladder crosswalks at areas where we know we have a lot of pedestrians and we've had issues. They're a little bit more expensive than a standard crosswalk, require more maintenance. In the system-wide approach, we would put those crosswalks everywhere, anticipating that at some point, someone is going to need more visibility for that crossing. So that's the variation in the strategy. And then the education component I've been mentioning, which we don't have, we have that in schools, so we are working in schools, both at the PD level and actually coast, we give them money to educate kids in schools, but we don't have a broader education program for the city. What might this policy require? For sure, it's probably going to entail more staff and programs in the area, particularly for motor cops, to give more tickets. Enforcement's a big part of it. Probably would require more resources in engineering as well. There'll also be trade-offs from existing programs, because as you know, we have limited resources, so we probably shifting some resources from perhaps capital, maybe maintenance, into safety, preventiveness. And then there would also have to be a cultural change in terms of acceptance for lower speeds. And this is where you kind of see the statistics, right here in this graph, where at 40 miles an hour, the chances, when you get hit by a car at 40 miles an hour, you're quite a bit more likely to die than if you got hit at 20 miles an hour. So that kind of introduces a new element. As you know, we can't just adjust the speed limit down. The state won't let us based on how we set speed laws, so that means that we're going to have to make design changes to slow people down. That, you know, traffic calming, as we mentioned in the report, is something that's been controversial in our past, so that's something we'd have to look at. The development of the program, if council wants to pursue this, we would go back and look at how we would fine tune, what would the Santa Barbara-style Vision Zero look like? What exactly would be the trade-offs? We'd come back with a presentation on our current strategy. We'd talk about the trade-offs and the costs of Vision Zero. We think that if you directed us to do that, we would probably wait until after the bicycle master plan is done because of our workload issues, so that means we're in early 2016 to come back if you direct us to. And we have plenty of resources from engineering and PD if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. We have a number of public comment speaker slips. Any questions first from the council? Okay, we'll go right to public comment then. We'll start with Eric Schwartz, to be followed by Catherine Mullen.
The gentleman here spoke of a cultural change, and that's exactly what it'll take, however, to invoke a little bit of history. That was the old culture of Santa Barbara in the 70s and 80s. It switched with influx of population from Los Angeles and Los Angeles-type driving habits that came into the city by the mid 80s. It was many people who rode their bikes everywhere, families quit doing it because they felt it was too dangerous and was endangering their children, especially people with school-age children. So then they entered their cars, and then you have more cars on the street, more congestion and more frustration, and more people driving faster between traffic jams or between congested intersections. So culturally, you know, it's just like depleting a species, you have to reintroduce it. So now, that's exactly what's needed to be done in order to get us back where we were 20, 30, 40 years ago, in terms of consideration and respect between road users. There was a lot more respect back then than there is now, and it has a lot to do with the frustration and the traffic clogging. When you get more people back on bikes and walking, you've reduced traffic and it'll help make up for reducing speed limits from 35 to 20. So it'll be a smooth flow of traffic at 20 without the congested or less congested intersections because more people are biking, and the speeds will be pretty close to the same, but you won't have the traffic deaths. So what it comes down to is, we failed for the last 30 years to protect our community, protect the children, and the real test is, can your nine-year-old, would you let your nine-year-old, grandson, son, child, niece, whatever, ride their bicycle to school in the city of Santa Barbara? Would you do it alone? Would you let them ride? If you can't do that, you've failed. This Vision Zero is an opportunity to quickly, and I would not wait to 2016.
Thank you.
It's your opportunity, so.
Thank you.
Take it. Thank you.
Catherine Mullen will be followed by Sam Franklin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Catherine Mullen, and I'm a resident of Santa Barbara. And I highly support that this council adopt a Vision Zero resolution for Santa Barbara. I'm a bicyclist, and I'm continually appalled at the lack of pedestrian and bicycle safety and ease of use in this city in comparison to my former home in New York City. Walkways and bicycle users' lives matter. Santa Barbara, we helped to make Santa Barbara feel more livable and friendly, and I believe that Vision Zero is one potential tool that Santa Barbara cannot forego to use. Cars need to slow down on our city streets. And by the way, the new traffic calming devices that are in my neighborhood now in the east side are great. We need more of these, they really do work, and it can make Santa Barbara a much more friendly city. Thank you.
Sam Franklin will be followed by Phil Walker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I think we all agree that Santa Barbara is a great place to live, but unfortunately, there's also a bit of an elephant in the room. Too many people are victims of traffic collisions and end up being seriously injured or even killed. I think we can all agree on that this is a problem. Traffic safety is an issue that affects everybody, no matter if they drive cars, ride bikes, or walk. It's a common ground that we all can, we all should be getting behind. By adopting a Vision Zero resolution, the city is basically sending out a message that we acknowledge that traffic safety is an issue, but with acknowledgement, we must also set ourselves a task of dealing with it and making it better. Now, some say that a goal of zero is unattainable, but I would counter that the only reasonable goal for our traffic system and our traffic culture is zero. Anything else is inefficient and I would even say immoral. Because I hope that we can also agree that even though, if we're not there yet, we should strive to make it so. Now, Vision Zero is not just about stating a goal or reducing speed or building bulbous or traffic calming measures. It's about improving safety for all road users through engineering, enforcement, and education. It's about looking at behavior as much as infrastructure, addressing alcohol abuse, distracted driving because of smartphone use, people jaywalking, cyclists riding through stop signs. But it starts with acknowledgement, agreeing that we have an issue and that we want to address that issue. So Vision Zero has been proven to be successful in a range of cities, and I think it could work very well in Santa Barbara, too. I think it's time that we join the Vision Zero movement, and I think, well, I hope that we all agree that our streets should be safer. Thank you.
Phil Walker will be followed by Rebecca Wade.
Good afternoon, once again, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This is great. You know, Vision Zero, that's where, in my case, on Quinientos there, coming out of my driveway, that's what I got where the rubber meets the road. And the traffic calming devices, I was sort of laboring under a misconception. I was told they were pedestrian safety refuge islands to jump up on. I sure wouldn't jump up on them, I've seen trucks go right over them. You know, you're going to have to tear apart everything that's happened over the last 35, 40 years, and going back to all the infill housing where a lot of people work out of their houses, they park vehicles on the street, construction vehicles. And it's a great idea, but, you know, it's such a major, major expenditure that you have to work through to get there. How about personal accountability, driving, walking, and bike riding? Thank you.
Rebecca Wade will be followed by Susan Horn.
I am Rebecca Wade, and I work for the Coalition for Sustainable Transportation, and I support Vision Zero. I direct three different projects here in Santa Barbara, Safe Routes for Seniors, East Side Walks, and Safe Routes to School, and I feel that these project constituents would greatly benefit from Vision Zero. One thing that we really see with our project constituents is the fear of walking and biking in Santa Barbara, and that's because there's multiple areas of concern that inhibit them from doing so. So please, on behalf of our project constituents and City of Santa Barbara residents, support Vision Zero.
Susan Horn, followed by Christine Nelson-Thurston.
I'm here to add my voice to the request that the city council adopt the Vision Zero policy proposal. With city staff and council fully aware of the increases in traffic that are expected in the next five to 10 years, I feel that a Vision Zero plan offers really solid opportunities for saving lives. And it's not often that a policy can save lives. I mean, it's just pretty amazing. I feel that these protections of city residents, of workers, residents, of course, workers and visitors that use our streets will contribute to the foundation for the health of our community and economic health as well.
Christine Nelson-Thurston will be followed by Bonnie Raisen.
Mayor Schneider, council members, first, thank you very much for bringing this before council today. I'm heartened that we're talking about this. As you know, Vision Zero acknowledges that people make mistakes. The road system should not, however. The idea is that all road users, cyclists, people in wheelchairs, pedestrians, cars, motorcycles, and truck drivers should be able to move safely. But many wonder whether we can actually get to zero. Well, let me ask you a couple of questions. Firstly, well, we learned a little bit about how many people have been killed or seriously injured on Santa Barbara streets this last year. That is, people in cars, walkers, cyclists, wheelchairs, anyone using our streets. But what are the causes of these collisions? Are they texting? Are they doing makeup? Alcohol, generally distracted, drinking coffee or answering phones? You may wonder, do you think it's possible to actually achieve zero serious injuries or deaths on our roads? If you think zero is unattainable, what should be the goal for Santa Barbara? 10, 5, 50% reduction? Well, then, what is an acceptable goal for your family? That is, how many people you love, would you be willing to include in that total number of seriously injured or killed on Santa Barbara streets? I bet you all answered zero. Shouldn't the goal be zero for everyone? How can we not strive for zero? Thank you very much for talking about this today.
Bonnie Raisen will be followed by Tom Becker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. First of all, I want to recognize the improvements that have been made on Ariaga Street. The four-way stop is genius, and it's, you know, I talk about it and people say, well, well, you know, hasn't it always been like? No, it has not always been like that, and you would be surprised at how meaningful those kinds of improvements are. They are few and far between, but they are happening slowly. And before, I think Vision Zero is a great idea. However, we need the basics of the infrastructure to proceed, that is, the crosswalks, which were mentioned. I think just rep, if we can't afford to do the blinking yellow ones, then I think they should just implement the ones that are there by painting them. That's number one. Before we start a program that is so sort of up here when the underlying issues haven't been dealt with, I think is a mistake. And the other thing I want to mention in addition to the infrastructure is that I know in certain countries in Europe, they license bicyclists, and the reason I mention that is because a nine-year-old getting on his bicycle and going to school is a wonderful concept. Mine did that, yeah, a long time ago. But I think it would be important that there be an age limitation. We have to have some restrictions on people on bicycles because they ride in crosswalks. And if a motorist going five miles an hour under Vision Zero hits a bicyclist who is braking, they are a vehicle, I mean, they are a moving item. I'll be finished in just a minute. They need to understand that, I mean, the motorist is the one that's going to be in court, and they will lose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Becker, followed by Fred Sweeney.
Thank you, I'd like to submit a letter. This is the vision statement of Vision Zero, mission statement. The basis of Vision Zero is that the responsibility for traffic safety should be on the road design rather than the road user. What, are you insane? We are responsible for operating our motor vehicle safely. The pedestrian is responsible for making sure he's crossing the street in a safe manner. The pedestrian is responsible for making sure he's crossing the street in a safe manner. The bicyclist is responsible for making sure they're riding their bicycle in a safe manner. The idea that these people want to shift responsibility from us to some engineer is obscene. Here's California Driver Handbook. Very clear, the motor vehicle operator is the primary person responsible for the safe operation of that motor vehicle. The pedestrian is responsible for their safe operation, and the bicyclist. The biggest problem that we have, the biggest single factor, is alcohol or drug impairment. 60% of all accidents, even more. But yet, Santa Barbara has the highest density of bars and nightclubs in California, and that's your fault and your responsibility for allowing that to happen. Mallory Dyes was killed on a street with a 25 mile an hour speed limit. Mallory was hit by a drunk driver who became intoxicated at a nightclub whose business license and business practices were approved and condoned by this City Council and this city government. Don't buy into this. We are responsible for our safe operation, not some engineer in a cubicle somewhere. Thank you.
Fred Sweeney will be followed by Alan Howard. Is Fred here? Did he go? He left? Alan? Alan here? Come on up. Be followed by Krista Muniz, you're gonna have to tell me.
Hi, my name is Alan Howard, and I'm a merchant here on State Street. This plan has a good objective, and I'm for it, but I'm concerned about the effects to the downtown merchants. If we glance at the picture over here, we can see historically that State Street has been used to deliver goods and services to the consumers and merchants of the city. The ability to deliver cargo and pedestrians is now being hampered by the reduction of delivery times and space along the State Street commercial zone. An example is this loading zone in front of my business. The hours were changed from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., to 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. There's nobody open at that time period. The three-minute passenger loading and unloading option was eliminated. There was no notice given to merchants. It just happened one day. The State Street commercial strip should not be redesigned to carry workers to and from work, whether it be by bike or by car. The less congested side streets should serve this purpose. If the plan is implemented, the city staff should work with the merchants associations, such as the DO and the Chamber, in order to maintain the viability of the commercial zone. State Street should be fun and safe for all persons, but we must remember that it's the main, the main purpose is to deliver goods and services to the people of this city. Just gaze at that street right there, right off Stern's Wharf. So, let's preserve the viability of the commercial zone for the merchants, as well as the safety for the bicycle riders.
Krista Muniz, and then followed by Craig O'Neil.
Much better the second time. Thank you. It's Krista Muniz. And I'd like to start by thanking Ms. Maria, what I'm about to speak about. She actually phoned me after the incident, and she was the only one. On February 22nd, 2014, my 17-year-old son was hit by a car. That morning, he had ran 10 miles. He was taking his 14-year-old brother up to the park, Ealing's Park, to go practice for his high school national cup game, and then he was going to be preparing for his winter formal that evening. He had, that was clocking 60 miles for the week. He was captain of his cross-country team, and then he was preparing to be captain of his track team. He unfortunately did not make it to winter formal, and unfortunately, he has not run on our streets since that day. My son was hit while crossing the street, walking home from Ealing's Park. Our streets, something needs to be done. It is not okay. I hear the gentleman in the back speaking about responsibility. It is a responsibility, yes, he's correct, of the drivers and of the pedestrians. It is also the responsibility of the city. It is our responsibility as a community to educate, and education versus ignorance is where we're at right now, and we need to educate people. My son was the 10% survival that was spoken of. The driver was going on the wrong side of the road. She passed a car who stopped to hit him, and who stopped to let him cross. There was no responsibility on her other than the fine. She had no legal consequences because of it. My family has paid thousands of dollars in medical bills. My son is just starting to run. He does not run on the streets. He's running on the track. It is not okay, and something needs to be done. We, as a community, need to stand together, we need to educate people, and we need to advocate for the safety of our children. Someone spoke about children riding bikes. My 10-year-old daughter, she is not allowed to ride her bike to school. She is not. She's not allowed to cross the street by herself. I barely allow my almost 19-year-old to right now when he's with me. We need to do something, and this is a plan that has proven successful, and I think it would be ignorant and a lack of responsibility on our part to do something and move forward and research what our options are. Thank you.
Craig O'Neil will be followed by Robin Elander.
Thank you for hearing about this Vision Zero. I'm a recently new resident of Santa Barbara, and I came up here in August after the death of my older brother, who was a cyclist, and he was hit and killed in Santa Maria. He was a PhD candidate at UCSB. And I just wanted to support Vision Zero, especially in regards to its agnostic approach to education with regards to pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists. It's not an us-versus-them scenario, and one of the unintended or unexpected things that weigh on my mind in the wake of my brother's death is actually the driver who hit him. He was a child. He was 17 years old, and this is gonna weigh on him for the rest of his life. If he had been, if the society as a group of individuals had come together and provided better educational tools to that driver, to that kid, maybe he would have made different decisions, and my brother would still be here. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Elander will be followed by Tom Jacobs.
Hi, my name is Robin Elander, the Director of Global Good Impact Community Building Projects. I just want to state that this is a very important campaign that can help create a safe and strong community. We have a city that's growing towards more and more pedestrian and cycling that's happening here, as well as just becoming a continuously more vibrant community. This is a really great way to look through a particular lens at current projects that we have in development, difficult intersections, and continue to move our city ahead into a continued thriving place. Thank you.
Tom Jacobs will be followed by Eva Inbar, then Ed France, Holly Starlee, Alex Pujot, and then Barry Remus will be the final speaker.
My name is Tom Jacobs, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. As an active participant in the planning and design process known as Safe Passage, focused on improving safety in the lower Mission Canyon circulation corridor, I'm a strong proponent of Vision Zero. The Mission Heritage Trail Association shares and supports the goal of eliminating unnecessary accidents and injuries through the implementation of proactive design standards for the safety of all who use our rights of way. Just as the American Disabilities Act brought greater awareness and facilitation, Vision Zero can be a lever to improve pedestrian and cyclist safety. I urge the city to actively commit to this process.
Eva Inbar.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Eva Inbar. I'm on the Board of Coats. I would like to add that there is no official mission or vision statement for Vision Zero. It is often defined, though, as this, that traffic injuries and fatalities are not inevitable, rather that many can be prevented through a concerted effort of engineering, enforcement, and education efforts. So, the three Es here. What is remarkable in my mind about Vision Zero is that it has such a broad base of support. It really cuts across the political spectrum. The AA National Foundation did a survey of their members of just under 10,000 people, and 86% supported Vision Zero. Here in Santa Barbara, we have the following organizations that have endorsed the Vision Zero platform that SB Bike and Coats put forward, and they are the SB Chamber of Commerce, the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department, and Mesa Architects, Mission Heritage Trail Foundation, and the Milpas Community Association. So, neighborhood groups, the last three. So, this is, gives you an idea how broad the support is. There are others that are still in process. We're talking to PTAs. This is really something that people in Santa Barbara will want and appreciate. So, we request that you adopt a Vision Zero policy, and calling your staff to develop a plan to implement that policy. At that time, you would then talk about the specifics. Thank you.
Ed France.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I believe Ms. Holly Starlee will yield her time to me, should that be necessary.
Oh, okay. Is Holly here? There you are. Okay, great. Go ahead. So, you have up to four minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, my name is Ed France. I'm the Executive Director of the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition, and we strive to make bicycling safe and accessible for everyone. Vision Zero is not just about bicycling. It's about people walking. It's about people driving. I have family in this community. I have cousins that are six and 10 years old. I have high school friends who died as pedestrians, as drivers. I would feel more comfortable being in a community where those kids are gonna grow up, in a community that strives towards a Vision Zero. Roadway fatalities are one of the leading causes of death for suburban youth. There is room to improve the safety of our roadways. The idea of personal responsibility is a very important one. We must take responsibility when we operate a moving vehicle, something that, as you go fast, can hurt someone. We take responsibility when we enter a roadway, even as a walker or as a bicyclist. We could actually injure somebody else because of our errors or not following the law. But roadway safety is a two-way street. We can't control the other, and we, as a government, have a responsibility. The roadway is a commons that we manage, and any preventable roadway death or injury is a tragedy of the commons. So, projections show more traffic on our city streets, and hence, we face increased risk. The time is now to be proactive and build on the city staff and city policy efforts towards a Vision Zero. We must aspire towards a vision of zero fatalities, even zero collisions, in order to achieve fewer. If Sweden could achieve, across the country, half, they could halve their fatalities and injuries. That's significant. If New York in one year could cut their injuries and fatalities by 25%, that's significant. There's room for improvement. Caltrans, at a statewide level, knows that its policies are antiquated. There's a flurry of change in the statewide policy. There's a change throughout this nation in a movement towards improved roadway safety. And a Vision Zero adoption by this city would empower staff to act proactively. Milpas Street is better because of what we've done. Cliff Drive is better because of what we've done. We are privileged to have very competent staff, but in managing them, we must set the vision, and council must set the vision, to empower them to do their jobs to the best of their abilities. There is a national trend that is saving lives, making roadways less dangerous and less intimidating for all users. Let's us show leadership in traffic safety. We know there is room to achieve safety improvements. Maybe we can never achieve zero, but we can strive for it. Thank you.
Alex Pujot.
I'm for zero also, zero. What a number, great number. I don't think anybody wakes up in the morning and thinks, oh, today I'm going to run over a bicyclist. And yet, it happens over and over. In today's paper, I read that the lady that killed Karina Velazquez basically did anything wrong. She was apparently crossing on the, maybe texting, whatever. So, she's not being charged. Zero people. We need to, need to be more proactive. These things are very touching to me. A friend, she has a son that was killed by bicycle on Las Positas. I mean, on that intersection of Cali Real, and, you know, this really hurts me. Please go for it. Thank you.
Barry Remus will be the final speaker.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, hello. I'm Barry Remus. I hope you will forgive my casual attire. I just got back from teaching bike safety rodeo at our local school. We are asking you, or you're being asked today, to consider a resolution to adopt a Vision Zero policy, and that truly doesn't necessarily mean something that has to be acted upon immediately. It doesn't mean immediate funds, but I think, and I think maybe hopefully a lot of us will agree, I want to raise two points, is that the timing on this probably couldn't be better. It's budget season. We're talking about where the dollars are gonna go. And I would hope that most people would hopefully agree that any dollars spent on preventing one more death, whether it's a pedestrian, a bicyclist, or a car driver, or a motorcyclist, is money very well spent. The other thing I just want to reiterate that some people have stated here is that Vision Zero is by no means exclusively to protect walkers and bikers. It's for all road users. I am a car driver, and I like it. I like driving my car. I'm also a bicyclist, and I like doing that, and I also walk. And there's a lot of people that share that same kind of mold, if you will, of really holistic, holistic transportation throughout the city, as well as our bus riders as well, too. So, I hope that nobody walks away from this session, or anybody gets the impression that Vision Zero is anti-car, or it's about protecting only certain people on the road that maybe deserve more protection than others. Everybody deserves the same amount of protection, whether in a car or not. And so, I hope that everybody will consider that, consider where the dollars can go. And yes, it means shifting some resources and maybe shifting some money that maybe might have been allocated earmarked elsewhere, but I think that we can hopefully agree that it's money well spent to get us to less accidents, less tragic accidents with bikes or pedestrians, whether it's getting down to zero or getting down to one above that. Whatever we can do can be an improvement. So, keep that vision alive. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. So, it's to the council. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Dayton, you put up a slide, I think it's the second from the last slide, regarding speed limits and survival rates. Yeah. What, how many roads, how much mileage in Santa Barbara is actually rated 40 miles an hour greater in the city?
Information from the first row, Derek Bailey is telling us it's about 2%.
That's the information I always look for, is Mr. Bailey. My question is, because one of the larger tenets of this proposal is about slower speeds, and as we've all heard, that the slower speeds are determined by warrants, so that we would be talking about trying to engineer lower speeds with, with what? If you could help me out with that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, on lower-speed, neighborhood-type streets, traditional traffic traffic calming is one way you can lower speeds. Speed humps, traffic circles, traffic calming. On major arterial streets, those types of devices really aren't appropriate because the nature of those streets is more to facilitate the movement of goods and people in big numbers and maintain mobility. So as far as how do you lower speeds on busier streets, you can narrow lanes, make people feel less comfortable. You know, you can get into really expensive streetscaping, things that really create a less wide-open environment on streets. We still want to maintain mobility, but more landscaping, medians, curb extensions, those types of things can make people feel less comfortable going fast on major streets.
Have our efforts on Milpas been pretty successful when we lowered, reduced the number of lanes on Upper Milpas in response to the Sergio Ramirez tragedy, obviously? Has that been, because you mentioned before, when we went down to four lanes, they were actually relatively normal or narrow lanes for a four-lane road, and there were side swipe issues. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, overall, we have about the same number of collisions happening now on Milpas than before. We've traded types of collision, so to speak. What's really increased in the area north of Cota Street, where we went from two lanes in each direction down to one lane in each direction, is there are more rear ends now because it takes a little bit longer to get through there. But there are fewer broadsides. There haven't been any pedestrian-involved collisions up in that area. So the severity of the collisions has dropped, but the overall number is about equal.
Okay. Because I can't think of anybody that would disagree with the ultimate goal of what we're trying to accomplish here tonight. I just want to make sure we're doing it the right way. I've sat in, I sat in years ago on the Circulation Element Task Force, sat in on the General Plan, Santa Barbara, spent many hours with Mr. Dayton over here about all these issues over the years. And now we've also initiated Bicycle Master Plan, which is also a great move forward to all this. And I want to see where we can go without a great duplication of effort, if at all possible. Because as I see, I think I can ask you specifically about almost any intersection or street in this town, you can lay out the stats and the whole configuration form. And I see on your left-hand side over there, the other key element, which is enforcement, which is what we're also lacking. I know that Mr. Franklin and I talked about that aspect of it, and that in and of itself, because we can make laws and policies all day long, but without enforcement, we're not going to get there. We made, we did the crosswalk stings that were, I think, fruitful for both drivers and for pedestrians. And I think that getting the word out about the most dangerous thing on the road, happens to be this thing in my hand right here, is also really, really important. Maybe Mr. Dayton can answer this. Were we to go to the Vision Zero as proposed here, what are we talking about in terms of process, procedure, staff time, investment, and that type of thing? And once again, I'm looking at this from the perspective of where have we gone in the last 20 years, all the committees I sat on going through this, and what new fruit can be born with doing this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, so there's two different resources. There's getting to the next council meeting, if you direct us to come back with a Vision Zero policy. There's a certain amount of resource we will spend and invest to figure that out. In other words, come up with the Santa Barbara-style Vision Zero. So that's, and we really couldn't figure that out. We don't have an estimate for you exactly how much resources that'll take, but it'll take Derek's time, and Mike's time, and all of us working to figure it out, compare with other cities, and then come up with our own brand of that. Then, when we come back to you, we're going to have a whole set of, here's what it's going to cost. And so that period, we'll be developing the presentation to you that tells you how much this additional costs, and what are the trade-offs specifically. And I would imagine we'd come up with some options, too, right? There's probably a range of how far to the pedal do you press down to keep the efforts going. I will say that in my tenure, you know, not all traffic engineers are the same. And if, without naming Vision Zero program, you know, Derek Bailey, our current traffic engineer, is very, has that Vision Zero, you know, angle already going. And as I explained in the presentation, that is exactly what we've been doing. It's been based on site-specific data. Now, as Derek will tell you, there will be a time where he's gone through all the data, and then he's identified all the low-cost items that can be adjusted on the road for those site-specific incidences. And he's estimating that'll take about two years to get through that data set. Then the next level is going to be more expensive items for localized fixes. So that, in a nutshell, is our current program. We will come back, if you ask us to, with a much more detailed version, but that kind of gives you the idea. The next level up is more focused on the enforcement level, getting more enforcement out there, spending more money on that, to reduce speeds, and then any other engineering additions that would, that could reduce fatalities specifically.
Enforcement could be a very immediate step, and it has been in the past, when we can put the bodies out there.
You can turn that one on and off.
No, and somebody, I advocated for the Cliff Drive changes, and those have been fabulous. I mean, a lot of people were against that idea, but it really is a more benign street to travel on. And we had a great meeting on the Mesa with Mr. Bailey hosting that was very well-attended, and a lot of people had the same exact ideas. Yeah, I used to live in Sweden, and one thing the Swedes share in common is they love pickled fish and strong spirits, and they also are very compliant. So you tell a Swede what a rule is, and they do it. One thing we don't do here is follow rules. We do this even though the police tell us not to look at these things while we're driving. And I think a lot of that is that education piece. So I'm definitely in favor of going in a direction of having zero fatalities and zero incidents. But I really think the education and enforcement piece, and I do think, I don't know, haven't talked to Mr. France about this in terms of the Bicycle Master Plan, but I think this all has a nexus. And what I'd like to see us do is move forward in one direction, not have different plans and different staff efforts and things going elsewhere. Because we already, I know most of us have calls into Mr. Bailey at least once a week, so can't stretch them too thin. Thank you.
Ms. Maria has her light on, but just before, something you said, I just want to clarify about Milpas Street. At first, it made it sound like it was equating accidents for accidents, like there wasn't a difference. But then, as I understand it, the severity of those accidents is a big difference. And I think if we looked at a Vision Zero philosophy you've achieved in that sense, in that we're not seeing fatalities or significant injuries. We're seeing people backing into each other, which are accidents, yes, but the severity of it is dramatically different with those implementation of those safety procedures, right?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, yeah, okay. Just because at first it was like, well, we have the same number of accidents, but, you know, they're very different from each other. So while I'm speaking, I'll just start the conversation, then go to Ms. Maria about, I think what's being asked of us is doing what we're already doing. We're putting a title on it and actually trying to coordinate all the different activities that Mr. Bailey's doing, that we're doing with the Bicycle Master Plan, by calling Vision Zero, being able to look at other cities that also have adopted a Vision Zero vision, policy, and seeing what the best practices are and incorporating them in a Santa Barbara style. So I think there's a way to do it without making it seem like it's extra, and in addition, it'll be weaved into the things that's already happening. That's how I'm looking at this, and not as an extra, but as a part of. So, Ms. Maria?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with you. That was well said. I'm persuaded that we should embrace Vision Zero as a philosophy and policy as things come up and the opportunities come up. I'm persuaded that Vision Zero supports all modes of transportation and personal accountability as well as Traffic Patrol. And I hear that from constituents all the time. They want more police on the streets. Speeding is a big issue. The endorsements are amazing here. The Chamber of Commerce, Citizens Planning Association, the County Public Health Department, that's really impressive. And there is evidence that it works in other countries and in some places in the United States. And I was really touched by Krista Muscinich, who came, when you hear about a mother who saw her kid hit by a car, it's really touching. And we talk up here about public safety, that I have heard people on this council say, public safety is the number-one issue that a city council should be doing. Here it is. Here it is, right here for us to go for. So I'm happy to make a motion, maybe when other people have had their say, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Doherty?
Well, I agree with my colleagues and the folks who spoke so eloquently about the need for this. This is a great goal as a community to be shooting for. I know Mr. Bailey does this on a daily basis, and I think that, as everybody else has said so far, you know, the devil's in the details and exactly how we implement this, and the pace that we do it, and the decisions we make on a street-by-street basis, and the financial realities of the city are all elements of this decision going forward. But having the goal and having that be the guidepost that we're aiming for is important to say as a community and as a council.
Ms. White?
Well, I agree with the comments that my colleagues have made. I really don't have very much to add to that, perhaps to say that in experiencing management of our police department and trying to get our motor cops back up and running, and that these practicalities come home to us and push us to find a way to make those things happen, and yet, often with daunting variables that hold us back. And obviously, with, Mr. Bailey gets brought up often as one who has, is looking at the practicalities of our city and helping us divine where we can. And Ms. Reisen brought up the Ariaga intersection as an example of a Bailey discovery and a Bailey project that is moving forward with Vision Zero. And so I certainly support the vision. And we have so many pieces in our city's planning, in our city's infrastructure, that are heading in this direction. This becomes an overall theme. I don't think it gets in our way. I don't think it impedes our overall efficiency. I think it's a reasonable and laudable vision.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I certainly wish that by passing this, all this stuff would come to pass, but I'm afraid it's going to be quite the opposite. The worst cities, according to the California Office of Traffic Safety, Santa Barbara isn't number two or three. It's actually, for the city its size, it's number one. Interestingly, other cities that are also number one in their category are San Francisco. Santa Cruz is number three. Berkeley is number one in its category. What does that tell us? Well, what it tells me is when there are more bikes in the street, your record gets worse, unfortunately. And these are cities that all have been pretty progressive in trying to improve things. So it's horrible, as it is, to suggest. It appears to me that our statistics are going to go down, and we're going to remain number one, and our fatalities or injuries are going to go up, unless we do the kind of things that we, as a council, suggested before, one of which was to isolate, segregate bicycle areas so that bicycles are concentrated on thoroughfares, as it were, within the city where they are expected to be, and not everywhere where they are not expected to be. And secondly, where we can do some sort of separation that will not reduce parking or car circulation, but allow bikes and cars to clearly see, this is my turf. That's not a Vision Zero proposal, but I think it's a Santa Barbara proposal, a Santa Barbara solution, and one that will be effective. This is like a big blanket that makes you feel good, but it's not going to make us warm, unfortunately. And I think that, I appreciate the local expertise we have here more than the larger cities and the bigger programs, because we know what we're doing. If we, for instance, let's say that we adopt as our criteria, safety first, engineering street designs that put safety first, we would have to shut down some of our historic streets. We'd have to straighten others. We would have to tear out walls and buildings. And that's the wrong criteria. A classic example is the Mission Corridor, just near the Natural History Museum, where we actually have to move the streets and walls back and forth in order to achieve what is believed to be a greater safety. So I think that exclusively having that as a criteria is a big mistake. And I would have to agree with Mr. Becker, although I seldom agree with his style, that personally, it's going to be one's, what, initiative itself. We cannot rely and shouldn't rely on others to do it, to be safe. We have to be safe ourselves. It's got to be, it's up to the individual. So, and that's training, and that does not, I think, it may be in the schools, but it really begins in the family. When you take your two- or three-year-old out and say, don't cross the street unless I'm with you. Or if you're going to ride your bike, you have to stay to the right or whatever. So I'm not going to vote for this, not as a curmudgeon, but because I don't think it does the right thing. I think it has great ideals, but I think they're mistaken in the way they're going to try to implement them. And I'm a little unhappy or disturbed with Mr. Bailey when he says, what we do to institute this is to make people feel more uncomfortable. Is that really what we want to legislate from here or anywhere? Is that what you would want to do to your neighbors? I don't think so. Anyway, so I will be probably alone in this regard, but I wanted you at least to understand why I'm voting against it. I did want to ask Mr. Cologne one last question. If we redesign streets with a specific purpose of making them safe, and in redesigning them, an accident occurs and the accident rate goes up from what it was before, are we, as a city, in any way liable?
Not if the design is reasonable.
Okay. I'm not sure what that means, but I understand. Thank you very much for listening.
Ms. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hotchkiss, you said you're not doing this as a curmudgeon, but you do admit you are a curmudgeon, don't you? You know, I agree with you that this is one of those things that sounds great. I mean, obviously, zero people getting killed in a traffic accident is something to strive for. That's a good thing. And I think it's something we do already. I think that some of the improvements that Mr. Rouse pointed out, for instance, the change on the Mesa, that's great. I think virtually everybody agrees with that. That was a huge improvement. And I think Mr. Bailey has been a huge asset to our engineering department. And he is, I think, very, very focused on realistic, risk-based assessments. And even I agree with Mr. Becker that personal responsibility is a key factor in all of this. That's very, very important to safety, and that's why the education part of this is so important. But at the same time, engineering is part of the solution as well. And to the extent that we can engineer our roadways and our public spaces to be safer for people, that's all to the good. I'm hesitant about this because I believe that the way I'm hearing this, this would redirect engineering priorities and public safety priorities in ways that might not be the best and that I think deserve a fuller discussion. So what I would like to see is specific proposals that say, this is something we're going to do. I'm, this idea of this, I think, you know, fairly vague philosophy, let's make sure that nobody dies. I'm concerned about what the actual ways that that would be implemented. Does that mean we need bulb outs on every corner? Does that mean, I mean, now, I will admit, I have an idea that I have not really floated before, but I am going to propose an ordinance that all cyclists be required to wear body armor, helmets, and that we have a minimum of three wheels on every human-powered vehicle. And that will improve safety enormously. So there are ways that we can improve safety, but we also have to deal with the reality of what people are willing to accept. And different people have different acceptance of risk. So I guess what I come back to is... So I guess what I come back to is, I think that we, as a city, and our traffic engineering department is already focused on safety to the, pretty much to the maximum amount possible. And I don't want to redirect our efforts, especially at this moment, when we're just really getting started with the revision of the Bicycle Master Plan. So I won't vote for this either, and I'm a curmudgeon, too, but that's okay. But obviously, I think all of us up here are deeply concerned with the safety of the people in this community in general, with traffic safety in particular, and I will support any particular project that advances those causes. Thank you.
So as I understand what's being asked of us today, if we're directed, it's for you to come back to council with the plan, which is what I, I think I just heard Mr. Francisco say he wanted to hear. So, so I would suggest that we give staff a chance to come back and see what the plan looks like. If you don't like it, then vote no. But, but I, you know, if we want, we have a, and you get a chance to actually see what it is, and how it then incorporates everything else that's happening, or not, and we can make a more qualified decision. So as I'm looking at the last slide here, that's the, what the Santa Barbara-style Vision Zero would look like, helped by Derek, the patron saint of traffic safety, I think, is the, is the piece. So I would suggest to my colleagues that you may be hesitant to say yes right now, because we don't have enough detail. What we're asking to be done today is for staff to come back with those details, and we can make a qualified decision at that point. So that, that would be my plea to some of my colleagues. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that we ask staff to come back with a Santa Barbara-style Vision Zero plan.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Move to the second. Mr. Francisco?
So, Madam Mayor, if I understood correctly, Mr. Dayton, were you suggesting that because of workload issues, that you wouldn't really take this on until after the Bicycle Master Plan is complete?
That's correct.
Well, that's, okay, that's what, four years from now, correct?
Well, no, actually, we're hoping the plan will be done at the latter part of this year.
Okay.
And so we would work, we're predicting, we're saying early 2016, we'd be back at council with a, if you directed us to come back.
Won't hurt me. Okay. Sure.
So, and obviously, going through the Bicycle Master Plan, these kind of concepts are going to happen through the Bicycle Master Plan. And I think, as Mr. Hotchkiss was saying about the idea of separating out even bicycle paths away from other traffic lanes for cars, that might even be part of the discussion that could lead to a Vision Zero. So I see no, I honestly see no harm of coming back and doing this, but we'll see how the vote goes. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Dayton, also, or as the motion makers, that we, we may come back with a hybrid of what's proposed, and say, "Santa Barbara-style," of what the Vision Zero is, and also the elements that we've spent a lot of time, money, and lord knows how many committees on, doing Circulation Element, as well as General Plan Update and the AMP. I mean, you have pretty much an encyclopedic knowledge of those, so, so we're not duplicating or crossing over, putting new layers on that. That'll all be, that'll be a little better part of your, your logic in putting forth some back to us, is what this, what this might be.
That's correct. And if there's any trade-offs between, you know, which that, what you're mentioning is largely a traffic ingestion management strategy versus safety, if there's any trade-offs there, we'd be sure to highlight those.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think we know what the motion is. Yes? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, I think that's six, one. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you all. Any council member, committee assignment reports? Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember White and I were at the meeting updating the zoning ordinance. And I do recommend people, especially land use planners and developers and people, that they come to that, those meetings. They're terribly interesting. We looked at the food trucks. We looked at home-based occupations. There's really a lot of interesting topics that we're covering. I'd like to congratulate the students at City College that graduated from the Transfer Achievement Program. They're going from two-year to four-year. It was great to be there, and their parents are all teary. We remember graduating college and making academic achievement. It's amazing in low-income communities how proud the parents are. And then I attended the Celebration of Tourism Luncheon, which was really cool. I congratulate Visit Santa Barbara for a very, a very nice event. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wednesday or so ago, I was pleased to host at my business, the Tippecop Luncheon for the Benefit for Special Olympics. And what was so cool about that, besides seeing what a really good server Mark Corbett could be if he wants another career, is the other side of, not the other side, it's the cops that we know, the people we know that work in our system, that are, that really care, that are really putting out the extra effort and working on their off-hours, not getting paid to benefit this, this group. That's a very nice juxtaposition of the national dialogue right now when it comes to our people in uniform.
Great. Okay, we have a closed session. Conference with labor negotiator. Okay, and we will adjourn from there. Thank you very much.